Good evening. And welcome to Howard's Board Appeals. This is a meeting of Howard's Board Appeals on this date, August 30th. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaws of the town of Howard in the Massachusetts zoning enabling act. As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting, which we are. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. During the meeting, the Chair will recognize promptly a member of the Board, the Secretary of Attorney presenting a case, to inform the Chair if protocol is not being properly followed. While in open session, those wishing to present comments or ask questions regarding the case, I request that fill out an information form on the podium. So if you're going to present during the case, there's a form on that podium. You just need to fill out your name, and I believe it also asks for your contact information, particularly, I think, email address, just so we know who you are. Okay? All right? I'd like to have each member of the Board identify themselves.
John August.
Dave Donahue.
Alexander Donahue.
Brian Sullivan.
Dave Royer.
Tim Bailey.
Chris Murphy.
Couple of points here before you started. Just want to make a clarification at the Cape Cod Chronicle reporting on the meeting last month regarding Round Cove Resorts. Cove Resorts, although my sainted mother would go out to her Reddit, they indicated in the newspaper that I'm an attorney. You know, when I, and it came out, I was kind of hoping that Bill Crowell would give me a call for a part-time job. That didn't happen.
It was a surprise to me, it was the two.
Okay. So I just want to point that out, that I am not an attorney. So it's, okay. The one of first, as far as calling a first case, one of first, actually called the third case first. And without any, no objections from the members of the Board. I'll take care of this business first.
All right. Case number 2023-26, Peter F. Wall. Their attorney, representing attorney Brian J. Wall. The applicant is seeking an appeal of a building commission to enforce alleged zoning violation of five Connecticut Avenue. That has been withdrawn.
So if you're here-
We need a motion.
Right, we will. If you're here for that case, just wanted to let you know upfront that it's not being heard tonight. So I'd like to have a motion.
So move.
Okay.
Withdrawn without prejudice?
Yes, withdraw without prejudice. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. So that was, excuse me, just wanted to double check that. Okay. That was a quick one. All right, the next case now?
All right, case number 2023-05, Brown Cove Resort Owner LLC and Fort Cove Landing Road LLC, represented by attorney Marion Rose Esquire. Owner of the property is located at 2173 Route 28, Fort Cove Landing Road, numbers two, Swan Drive. Assistants map 115 parcel S-1-3 and the R2 plus H52 in the RH2 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit to exchange and alter-
Change.
Change and alter expanding the pre-existing non-conforming amenities of a hotel motel by raising and replacing three one-story structures with three two-story structures intended for continued hotel motel use, increase of 12 units.
Now, this is a continuation of the meeting from July 26. Now, since the case has, the cross-releaf, the case has been, was refiled and re-advertised. Without, I don't hear any objections from the Board, just we're going to start from the beginning. Okay? But if you would, you're welcome to present. Obviously, we have records of last month's meeting and all your presentations' information. So whatever you feel is important for you to present this evening, you know, to the Board, then we'll proceed accordingly. And as well as any, anybody else who's going to be speaking in an open and public meeting, the same courtesy, the fact you can, at your discretion, make any presentations that you want to make regarding the case. Okay?
Thanks.
And if I could ask the applicant to introduce themselves and who is assisting you?
Certainly. For the record, I'm Marion Rose from Singer &amp; Singer in Dennisport. I'm here on behalf of Brown Cove. With me is Demir Van Roerschak. He's from Coastal Engineering.
Okay.
I've taken John Bologna's place tonight. I also have Alton Chung, who's the regional manager of Waquasit and other resorts related. And he's in the audience in case there are questions. We also have Kim Bealan, who's an attorney with Moriarty, Bealan and Trowbridge. She's here as well.
Now, before you begin, and I apologize for this, I want to remind the Board who is voting for tonight.
That's what I'd like to clarify, yes.
Okay. So as our last month's meeting, the voting members for that case who were appointed were Al Donahue, myself, Dave Royer, Tim Bailey, and John August.
And if you could just give us a little more volume, please.
Certainly, certainly. I'm going to keep my points brief, and I'd like to expressly ask that the points that were made, the presentation that was made and discussions had in the last meeting and all of the submissions are part of the record. First, I'd like to address why the last meeting was continued. It was continued so that we could amend the hearing request to ensure that there was no question that neighbors had adequate notice of the scope of the project. Mr. Donahue has read the revised description in the revised application request, and I think that that, that there's no question that there's adequate notice now, if there was a question before. Two, lighting was an issue that was thoroughly discussed in the last meeting. In fact, the Board had a straw poll which indicated that the Board felt that lighting was not substantially more detrimental to, was not a cause of this project being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. But the Board Chair did mention that there was a concern about lights on posts, the lamp posts, in various areas that were not dark sky compliant. And so, in the interim between the last meeting and today, we have submitted a photometric study, which I, if you all do not have a copy of that, I have copies with me. We submitted a photometric study which shows that, and pull sheets from the lighting, the lighting to be used outside. The lighting to be used will be path lighting that's no higher than my knee. It's all dark sky compliant. The other lighting that's on the exterior of the buildings is also downward facing and dark sky compliant and fits within the Howard zoning bylaws, lumens, ratings well below.
Do we have that report, gentlemen? I didn't see it like that.
I'm sorry?
You said there's reports?
I submitted it with the town. I can also submit it, I can also give you a copy of it.
I don't, I don't think I saw that.
Sure. I've got copies of it here. Sure. But just to confirm-
I didn't have it. Okay. All right. So you guys had this? Your package? Okay. Thank you.
To confirm, there will be no post-mounted lighting in the work area. And to that point, and all of the light will be dark sky compliant and will follow the Howard zoning, the Howard lighting bylaw. To that point, we'd offer a condition that would memorialize this. We suggest the condition, the applicant shall meet or exceed all requirements of the Howard lighting bylaw in the work area of the project approved. Specifically, all exterior lighting shall be dark sky compliant. Any existing non-dark sky compliant post-mounted lighting in the work area will be replaced with conforming lighting. In regards to noise and light, we believe that noise concerns were specifically and thoroughly addressed in the last meeting. Also believe that this was done through operations, the way the resort handles issues on camp, on the campus. We believe that it was, it will be handled through compliance with the Howard noise bylaw as well. In regards to that, we'd suggest two additional conditions. The first would be, the applicant shall install the landscaping as shown in the submitted plans. With regard to screening of the work proposed from Two Cove Landing Road, the applicant shall maintain and if necessary, replace plantings as needed. And then with regard to noise, the applicant shall follow the Howard noise bylaw. As part of the work we've all done at moving this project forward, one of the things that we've responded to is the procedural questions by abutters council. And respectfully, we believe that the questions raised with town council in writing through a six-page memo, raised again in considerable detail at the last meeting, and raised again in the memo that was submitted last week, which we've responded to. But the Board and town council have addressed all issues raised, and there are no new issues here. Re-engaging with town council would create more delay. The initial engagement, the helpful, did delay both the planning board and CBA hearings. We believe that the questions have been asked and answered. Finally, I mentioned, we, we were asked to make sure that we had plans available to be stamped. Those are, have been presented to the Board, submitted earlier to the town. Those are ready when and if the Board decides in favor of this project. Prior to the meeting, the Board Chair provided we with proposed conditions, and I'd like to address those now. Certainly, sure, okay. Prior to this hearing, the Board Chair provided me with proposed conditions that the Board, or someone on behalf of the town has prepared.
Yeah, just to clarify that, the last meeting, we discussed the fact that we were going to take your presentation-
Correct.
And indicate something, you know, from that presentation, conditions that we thought you were making regarding your-
Right.
Request relief.
Right. And so I'd like to go down this list and say-
So I just wanted to let everyone know what we did.
Perfect.
So we prepared them ahead of time to, so it'd be, you know, obviously easier to go over the conditions here.
Perfect. So, we have no issues with condition number one. It could be chosen instead of my condition number two. That's fine. Condition number two, I believe there was a misunderstanding here. What I have said in the past hearing was that, yes, the abutters have a patio on the applicant's property, and we have not asked them to remove it as of now because we're in this process. That decision would be a separate decision to be made by the owners at some other time, and I cannot agree to, you know, whether to keep it or to remove it. And I cannot agree to that condition now.
I think for the record, as we go to each condition here, I'd like to read it out then-
Certainly.
Okay, so, on the first condition was that the Board had drafted, based upon last meeting. The applicant shall install, shall install screening of over 20 mature evergreen trees with sizes varying from eight to 10 feet to 14 to 16 feet planted at a grade higher than Two Cove Landing's dwelling in accordance with the plan submitted by applicant. The applicant shall properly maintain all such trees and shall in a timely manner replace any trees that die or otherwise become unsightly with trees of similar size and type. And you're agreeing to that?
I am agreeing to that. The second condition, the applicant shall continue to permit Two Cove Landing to use a patio located fully two-thirds on the applicant's property. If that is a requirement for an ongoing, permanent use, then I cannot agree to that on behalf of my client.
I understand.
I'm not saying either way what's happening with that, but I just cannot agree to that. Number three, only four rear-facing exterior lights shall be placed on the rear second-floor decks of buildings identified as A and B on plans submitted by the applicant, and they shall be dark sky compliant and linked to motion sensors to limit their use during evening and nighttime hours. In addition, each night, the window treatments for each rear-facing room in buildings A and B shall be closed and blackout drapes shall be drawn over the rear-facing doors and windows. I have two points on that.
Certainly.
I've talked with Alton Chung prior to this meeting, and the turn-down service isn't done in empty rooms, so this would be for occupied rooms. The, so I think that I would change this to the last sentence where it says, "In addition, each night, the window treatments for each," I would add occupied rear-facing room in buildings A and B. And then I just want to make certain that in agreeing to this, there's no responsibility to keep those drapes maintained. Once the turn-down service has been done, occupants of the room, the guests, may or may not open those.
That's, that's-
Hopefully, that's understood.
Right.
Number four, the applicant shall follow its established policies and processes to avoid, lessen, and if necessary, terminate any offensive conditions on its property in a timely manner. Should any of the applicant's staff become aware of any potentially unreasonable noise, or even if not unreasonable, noise potentially unwanted by others, calibrated effort shall be made to engage and if necessary relocate the noise, source of the noise to another more isolated locations on the 22-acre property of the applicant. The applicant shall follow the guidelines of the Howard zoning bylaw which applies to organized events and to the applicant's restaurants. Here, I can agree to most of this. I believe that the first, and my concern is not the commitment of Waquasit to make sure that both Waquasit's guests and neighbors have have an experience where there's no unreasonable noise, or if there is unreasonable noise, it is dealt with. That is a commitment that's ongoing. I just think that this would be hard to enforce in this way. So I think the intent would still be there if you kept the first sentence, which is, "The applicant shall follow the established policies and processes to avoid, lessen, and if necessary, terminate any offensive conditions on its property in a timely manner." And then remove this, this next sentence that begins with "should," which goes over about four lines. Remove that entire sentence, and then pick up again with, "The applicant shall follow the guidelines of the Howard noise bylaw which applies to organized events and to the applicant's restaurants." And again, there's been a history of, you know, strict compliance to the Howard zoning bylaw here.
This pretty much comes out of your wording on your summary of reasons.
Right. No, I understand. It's, it's-
You're asking us to approve this based on your memorandum of understanding, but you're not liking it in the conditions.
I think what I was trying to say in my summary is this is the way that Waquasit works. This is their operational process. I just think it would be hard to, it would be hard, and that's their goal, but I think it would be hard to have that as a condition of a permit, of a special permit. And then the rest, five through nine, and I'll be happy to read these, we have no problem with. So number five, plantings throughout the project's area will be enhanced with particular emphasis on increasing naturalized areas within the zero to 50 bumper zone. Six, roof runoff shall be collected and treated on the applicant's property using infiltration basins that are sized for a 100-year 24-hour storm event. Hardscape runoff shall be, also shall be, treated using infiltration basins that are sized for a 100-year 24-hour storm event. Number seven, all of the redeveloped structures shall be connected to the existing onsite wastewater treatment facility, which is governed by a groundwater discharge permit issued by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Number eight, during the life of the project, all construction vehicles will, shall be parked on the applicant's property and not on any public street or road. Number nine, it is a condition of this approval that a violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
Could we hear your proposed changes to number four again, please?
Certainly. I guess my point is that I think the first sentence covers the middle part of this, the middle sentence, but my changes would be this. I would keep the first sentence, "The applicant shall follow its established policies and processes to avoid, lessen, and if necessary, terminate any offensive conditions on its property in a timely manner." I would remove the second sentence because that's the intent of what the first sentence is describing, but it just seems difficult or open to interpretation as to how to enforce. And then I would keep the last sentence which says, applicants, sorry, applicant shall follow the guidelines of the Howard noise bylaw which applies to organized events and to the applicant's restaurants.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Just so the Board can give you a recommendation here, is we'll be finalizing these things after we hear from people in open session.
Yes.
Okay, in public, in public meeting, not, not be negotiating it at this point now.
Right, I just appreciate you hearing me out on those.
Right, no, I just wanted to clarify that, we'll have plenty of time to discuss this during, during a public, public session.
On behalf of the applicant, we thank you all for your patience and your time, especially your time over this long period. We would like to ask that the Board make a finding concluding that the application has met, the applicant has met the standards required for the two special permits, and ask the Board vote in favor of the two special permits requested for the work as proposed and shown on the submitted plans. We're ready to answer any questions that you might have. We have the slide deck, we've got, we can pull things up, but we just wanted to keep this simple if we possibly could.
Okay, thank you. All right, Board members, let's start with John. Do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
No questions. I have no questions this time either.
Is it all?
No questions at this meeting.
No questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we probably just like to, not hearing additional questions now from the Board, I'd like to open this up to public and ask anyone wishing to speak to the state to come. As a matter of fact, I don't know if you want to pull up at a table, you guys would-
Pretty here's fine.
Okay, all right. Obviously, identify yourselves and-
For the record, attorney Michael Ford, I'm here with attorney Bill Riley, and we represent the immediate abutters to the project, Dottie and Stan Shelton. Mrs. Shelton is with us this evening as well. First of all, let me extend my appreciation to the Board. I know this was kind of an arduous thing, and I think you did the right thing in re-advertising and, and getting that out, out ahead of that and holding a new hearing. We appreciate the opportunity to address you again at this hearing. I would like to review an issue that we did review, although I'm not sure we reviewed it in a lot of detail at the last meeting.
I don't know who that was.
Okay.
What was that? Did somebody have a phone?
I think that was Mr. Crowell trying to move me along here. I know he's, right.
I'll have to remove you if you don't.
So if I might, Mr. Chairman, beg your indulgence to review a couple of the legal issues before I touch again, or touch for the first time, and I appreciate having been provided with your draft conditions that appears the Board has worked on and tried to capture from the last hearing, and we appreciate the opportunity to comment on those as well after I review those legal issues again. As the Board is aware, and I assume you all got a copy, I did submit another, for me anyway, short memo for your file dated August 24th, in which I tried to review again what I believe to be the two legal issues that create an impediment for this Board granting the special permit under the non-conforming section. By way of background, when this was first filed, as you know, it was filed as two distinct lots, Four Cove Landing and, and then the hotel parcel. So we had a single-family home parcel, and we had a, what we thought was a single-family home parcel until we began to do the research, and then a hotel parcel. And then during the course of these hearings, which were principally carried out at the planning board, at some point before they actually made their presentation to you, the applicant caused an 81X plan, so-called, to be recorded at the registry of deeds in which they purport to eliminate the common lot line between the single-family house lot and the hotel parcel. And their reasoning, I believe, is that that allows them to comply with the provisions of the bylaw that they're before you on, which is Section 32554, which in part allows this Board to grant a special permit to, for a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming use occupied by lawful structures, to raise those and to replace them. And the language of the bylaw is, "With a new structure on the same site." And they reason that- And they reason that by filing the 81X plan, the single-family house lot has become part of the same site, and that authorizes this board to grant a special permit where one of the new two-story hotel structures will now be located in part on what was, until the 81X plan was filed a month or so ago, a single-family house lot. And so our position is that the phrase "on the same site" does not refer to after-acquired property of the non-conforming lot, and as long as you've made it a new perimeter plan, then it's the same site. In reading the bylaw as a whole, in reading that section as a whole, it would appear to me that the language refers to the site upon which the non-conforming use is currently located and not "on the same site" being a site that they cobbled together for the purposes of asking you to grant a special permit. You've heard that last time. I thought that I should lay it out again in a memo for your record, and so you have it. I did ask, and as I did at the meeting the last time, if town council could look at that opinion and, and weigh in on it. I know that my sister believes that, she almost sounded like a trial lawyer there. Asked and answered was, was her position on that. I appreciate that. And, but I went back and I read town council, Caswell's opinions, which were in a formal letter, first written to former town planner Paul Alkiotis, and then a series of emails that were colloquy back and forth between the chair and town council, all of which the chair kindly shared with us before the last meeting, so we were aware of those as well. And I have to say that I disagree respectfully with the position that that question has been asked of, of town council. I don't believe you'll find anything in any of the writings of town council in which she has opined on what the phrase "on the same site" means. And so that's the reason that, given all the time and effort that all the parties have put into this, it seemed to me to make abundant sense that before those phrases are interpreted in some other forum, that we try to resolve them as a town and get the benefit of our legal counsel on that particular question. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, whether after receiving my memo, anyone from the town did in fact reach out. I'm sure if you had, you probably would have advised me. You've been very good about telling me on that. So we believe that that is a bar to your granting the special permit. The other issue we addressed in the memo was this whole notion that in Howard, because there's no language in the zoning bylaw that says you can't have two principal uses on one site, that two principal uses on one site are authorized. And I did brief that question and provide you with some law on it. I cited the sections of the bylaw that I think support the position that we take, that the bylaw is pretty clear that you have one principal use on a lot, and then from that you take a look and see what's accessory, what isn't accessory. Indeed, I found it instructive that where hotel motels are allowed, there's also a definition in the bylaw of what uses are incidental to a hotel. Tells you what other uses you can have on a hotel site, and one of those is not a single-family home. And the bylaw goes to great lengths to define what's ancillary, what's accessory, and what's principal. And I'd suggest respectfully that that reading of the bylaw is not one that I've seen before. And it would seem to me that the language in the bylaw, under the table of use regulations, which specifically provides that any use that's not specifically authorized is prohibited. And it would seem to me that would apply to a reading of the bylaw that says you can have two principal uses on, on one lot. Now, the reason that's important here again pertains to this whole notion of whether or not they can include this, what, what was until a month or so ago, a single-family house lot as part of this hotel lot, because they then use that hotel lot and its acreage to determine the, the areas to support their findings for their special permit, including the expansion of the other uses on the site for which they're already over the, the 15% in the bylaw, and they want to increase that further. In my sister's reply memo to my memo, she, in addition to saying that the questions had been asked and answered, she indicated that in 2008, that the planning board authorized some hotel use of the single-family house lot. And in my prior memo, which I know you have a copy of, which was provided to town council, I cited a factual chronology of what happened after the 2008 special permit. And one of the things I pointed out was that after that 2008 special permit in which council for the applicant believes that the planning board somehow threw holy water on all this coming together as one site, that in 2014, the owner of the single-family house lot went forward and applied for expansions and upgrades of the single-family home, including an expanded kitchen and, and other things in the single-family home. And I provided all of that backup to both the planning board and the Board of Appeals, and the building permit for, in 2014 specifically provided that it was to be used as a single-family home, and it showed the 38,000 square foot lot. So this is now six years after the event in 2008 in which supposedly the planning board had authorized a portion of the residential house lot to be utilized for the hotel. Fast forward to today, we're now told, and we're told in the papers filed most recently by council, that, well, it's not really a, a single-family home, even though that's what the building permit said, and, and we agreed with that language, and we made the improvements, we got the benefit of the permit, we add, we expanded the kitchen, we did all those things to the single-family home on that lot. It's really a two-family. And not only that, it's, it's, in their view, a non-conforming two-family, and they cited that it's been a two-family since they bought it in 1997. How it got to be a two-family, nobody knows. The initial building permit says it was a single-family. The second building permit in 2014 says it, it's a single-family, but let's just assume for a second that council's right, that it, it's now morphed into a two-family, and it's pre-existing non-conforming. What happened to it when the 81X plan was filed? If you did have a pre-existing non-conforming use on that lot, and the lot line was wiped out, how does it have protection as a non-conforming single family? I, I don't follow any of this, and none of it seems to fit into the customary way that we handle non-conforming uses and single-family dwellings. And there is no request before you to allow a two-family dwelling on this hotel parcel. According to council, you're now going to have one, and I know the board at the last hearing said, "Well, that's not really before us, Mr. Ford. That's a whole nother, that's a different issue." But frankly, it is, because this all goes to that question of whether this is the same parcel that a non-conforming use existed on such that you have jurisdiction to grant the permit for which they've applied. Can you take something that's pre-existing non-conforming on a separate lot and just merge it with this without zoning relief? I don't think you can, because two-family dwellings are not allowed in this district, the RH2 district, without a special permit. No one's ever applied for one. And yet they want to have the benefit of a merger and utilize the lot area to do their calculations to help the hotel project that they've presented to you. So for all those reasons, and I know I've been over this before, but I thought it was important enough to put it in a memo again, to get it in your record. I will be providing it to the planning board and ask them if they would run it by council as well before they make a decision, because they, they're going to meet on the 12th, and I know in a site plan review, special permit, you have to make a finding that the project's in compliance with the zoning bylaw, so I think this is all relevant to them. And so we will continue to press this issue, and we appreciate, Mr. Chairman, you and the other board members' patience in allowing us the opportunity to articulate it again tonight in more detail, so, and are happy to take questions on it in that regard. With respect to the conditions that you passed out before the hearing, Mr. Chairman, we have never, always, my clients haven't really approached this. Well, let me back up. The Sheltons have owned their house since 1987. They've lived next to the inn for all of those years, so that's what's that, 36 years, Dottie. This is the first time they've ever opposed anything that's ever happened at the Waukawasit, and the Waukawasit has filed one thing after another over the years. They've always had a good, positive relationship. We understand there's a new owner. We understand it's a different game now, and, but I don't want you to think that this is a neighbor that hasn't made an opportunity, or hasn't taken the opportunity to try and be a good neighbor on this project as well. But every other project, they've always had a different way of dealing with ownership, which they simply don't have in this particular case. That's unfortunate. Having said that, I ran the conditions that you kindly provided to Mr. Riley and I before the hearing. I showed them to Mrs. Shelton, and I know you're not quite there yet, but anticipation of perhaps getting there, given the straw poll that was taken the last time, I understand that, I can count noses, we would, we have no problems with any of the conditions that the board... I would suggest that the proposed change to number three, that council offered, that the window treatments, once they were drawn each night, that in the rear-facing rooms you, they only be occupied, that, that should be every room, otherwise you got rooms that are vacant with lights on. I mean, I, I don't understand the, why you wouldn't require that to be all of them. I think your condition was a good one. I, I wouldn't muck it up with the, the suggested amendment. With respect to number four, I, like you, sat here through that presentation that council made, which was a very complete presentation last time we were here, and she did spend a great deal of time going into detail about noise abatement, and I think frankly, number four captured it. And so I'd, I'd say to the board, "Go ahead and see if you can't get your condition in there," because those were the things that all of us heard that were presented on behalf of the applicant. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm happy to take questions. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to have the chance to, to speak again tonight on the legal issues we think are important and on your proposed draft conditions.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions for the attorney, the council?
No questions.
I was wondering, Attorney Rose, if you might address some of the issues which before pointed out in his presentation?
Certainly. I believe, pardon me, I believe that town council has addressed many of the issues that my brother has raised tonight. I'm looking at a copy of the letter, which I unfortunately printed on very large paper, from KP Law dated June 21st, 2023, 2023. With regard to whether you all are empowered to grant a special permit, she says that the relief required, in her opinion, provided that the lots are merged, either by the merger doctrine or preferably by the recording of a GL Chapter 41, 81X plan, which has been done. The relief required is a special permit from the zoning board of appeals to alter and expand a non-conforming use in structures on the property. In regards to whether there can be two uses on a single property, she says... And this actually also goes, this paragraph is in combination about the merger issue and the two-use issue. "It is likely," and I quote, "that the two-family use on Four Cove Landing Road is a pre-existing non-conforming use as it was in existence when the zoning was changed from residential to RH2 at the Four Cove Landing Road lot. Further, if the lots do indeed merge, or have," I'd add, "already merged," and then begin quoting again, "it appears that there will be two primary uses on the entire property, a hotel motel and a two-family dwelling, for which I do not find a prohibition of in the bylaw." I would add, then the RH2 district, hotel motel use by special permit and residential use are two primary uses that are contemplated, and there's, again, no place in the bylaw that specifically says there cannot be two primary uses on one property. That's all I have.
I think the other point that the town council brought out was, and a question that I, that we had, was regarding setbacks.
Yes.
Yes, and the opinion of the town council, the direction was that the setback for, for the motel use was that setback, and for the existing house, okay, it had that residential setback.
Correct.
That we were applying the, the setbacks based upon, to the structure for the use, type of use that structure had.
Correct.
Very similar, in fact, in other cases where someone's putting a patio on a lot, the setback is based upon, you know, that amenity, okay? Yes, sir?
I, I read that last time I was here, in the email colloquy between you and town council, and went back and looked at the bylaw, and there's a provision in the bylaw that says that any accessory structure to a principal use on the site has to meet the same setback as the principal use. Now, I guess the way they get around it in this particular case is to say that, whether it's a single-family home, I'm not sure, or a two-family home, or a non-conform, whatever it is, that that is a different, that's a principal use and not an accessory use, and therefore wouldn't have to meet this 50 feet. But I'm not sure council ever looked at that section that requires, if you've got a principal use as a hotel and you're going to put an accessory structure on there of some type, it's got to meet the hotel setback, even though it might be used for storage or something else.
I, I don't believe you're wrong regarding a, a building itself, you know, which, you know, has a foundation or whatever structure, and amenity, which could be patios or, you know, small deck and so forth, can have, can certainly, based upon their height, can have a different setback. But referring to the, what we, the principal question, and anyway, the board, please help me out here, if you want to, you know, come in, was that regarding the, the house itself did not have to adhere to the setbacks of the motel use. It could, the, the house itself could have, the residential property, the setbacks that would be going to be required were based upon what would be for residential, and then for the setbacks for the commercial use, for the hotel use, and the hotel buildings, that had to be based upon the setbacks required for a motel, the motel district.
Right, but keep in mind, there is no residential property. According to them now, it's one lot, and hotel amenities are now going to be on what was a residential lot.
I, I'm not disagree, I'm not disagreeing with the fact it's now because of the merged doctrine, and of course, town council indicated that whether it was under merged doctrine or because of the 81X plan that was filed, they... of the 81X Plan that was filed, they, she considered it now a merged lot that could have more than one use, and the setbacks for those uses, those structures, had to comply with the setbacks required in a zoning district for that use.
Right. Provided you can have two principal uses on one lot.
Yes. Right. And she indicated the fact that there was nothing in our code that said that you cannot. And I know from, and I can't give you an example, but this resort would not be the only property in town that has a, often a dual use, whether it's a, you know, contractor's building on a lot that has his residence, you know, in the front of it or so forth. We have many other locations.
Those are provided for in the bylaw.
Right. But it's there. They're allowed to be existing in town.
There's a provision in our bylaw that says where a single-family home, in any zoning district in which a single-family home is allowed, there shall be only one single-family home on that lot.
Correct.
So, to me, the implication is pretty clear.
No, I understand.
So, well, I put all that in the memo, so, thank you.
No, my pleasure. Okay. Is there anyone else in the public that'd like to, you know, speak regarding this case? That being said, it...
Before we close the public hearing, do you want to move the conditions?
Actually, probably, that would be the, that'd be fine.
Can I make a couple of comments on it?
Yes.
I think Attorney Ford's comment on three is well-taken. On the, you wanted to add Attorney Rose, occupied. I don't have any problem with occupied, but I think to his point, then, we should add a statement then on any non-occupied rear-facing rooms that will be no lights on at nighttime.
I think that's fine. That's fine.
Okay.
So we just eliminate the change?
We'll have to add another sentence there that on the rear-facing, non-occupied rooms, there'll be no lights on at nighttime.
Okay.
I'm just going to make a note now, and I can send that to you. And I've got a comment on four. Let me just make a note here.
Yeah, in terms of three, I'm just not sure what their operations are like. They may or may not want to have those shades drawn when the rooms are unoccupied, so I just don't want to agree to that. But lights would definitely be off.
Yeah, okay.
So that works.
With respect to four, and I probably was a little unfair there, since when I used to work, I had people work for me, and they didn't always do what they should have done. I did say any of the applicant's staff. Your wording didn't say any of it, said the, should the applicant's staff become aware of.
Right.
And I would propose we leave that, strike any of it, just say, should the applicant's staff, because I think that implies applicant's staff, somebody in authority that's going to say, yes, we need to do this. In other words, not the lowest down in the total poll worker who might not
Right.
know it, but one of your supervisors or whatever.
Okay. If I could just have a moment to consult, like, with Alton on that, either now or when we're finished with this? I think that's actually the only other condition, so can I take a moment?
Sure.
Sure. I seem to have misplaced my copy of the conditions that the attorney wrote. Does we have an extra copy of someplace? No, no, not that one, but Attorney Rose, do you have a copy?
Please?
Yeah. Somehow I misplaced it. I want to make sure everyone's got a copy. You should have had an extra copy of someplace.
Yeah, I have two.
All right. There you go. So Dave, are you now saying that we're going to do all of four, so make that change, get rid of should?
Well, she's confirming with her client.
Right. But that's what you recommended, that we just get rid of any of, just should the applicant's...
Take out any of, should any of that, we just say, should applicant's staff. So that implies somebody in authority becomes aware of it.
Dave? Dave? What about, what about item two? Do you think this is something we can...
I think that's unfair to insist on that. I just don't get it, seeing how it would fly or not. But even I, when I wrote it, thought it was kind of unfair, but that's what I was a lawyer, trying to sneak unfair stuff through.
I think that this section is, again, it's the intent of Wacquasit to do these things. There's a person who walks the grounds, who tries to, if there is noise that's unreasonable, that would bother other guests, they try to put a stop to it. And I just, noise potentially unwanted by others, that seems, it's hard to figure out who the others are. And if that could be removed, I think...
Reading from your memorandum, should staff become aware of any potentially unreasonable noise, or even if not unreasonable noise, potentially unwanted by others?
Right.
So, I mean...
That's their intent.
I just look it right out of your memorandum.
Absolutely. That's their intent. It's just hard to put an intent into a condition here. But I guess it's discretionary, it's subjective, and so if...
You know, I'm trying to be reasonable.
Right.
You know, as you're aware, we don't, we can impose the conditions.
Oh, absolutely.
It's not really a negotiation. We can impose them, and you like them or not.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. I'm just concerned about...
Reasonable to the applicant.
Right.
And, I'm sorry, to the applicant and to the abutter over here.
Right. So...
Could I ask, the first sentence that says, you'll follow your established procedures, do those established procedures spell out the intent?
That's what I'm trying to say. I'm concerned if, if unwanted. I believe, the goal here is to make sure that there is not substantially, like, noise that's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Part of the project's not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. It's not what's preferred. And so if, for example, an abutter preferred not to hear a telephone call that was at, you know, regular levels, that's 160 feet away, I'm a little concerned, I mean, the intent is for people to have peaceable enjoyment of neighbors' property and guests at the resort to have peaceable enjoyment in their rooms and outside. But I'm a little concerned that this as a condition, this section is, I mean, this particular part, as a, I mean, as long as it's in that context, that it can't be unreasonable, I think that's what the bylaw suggests.
Are you going to comment on this point?
I'd like to, yes.
Is that okay?
Oh, absolutely. We're still in public. Thank you. Ms. Rose has stated that these are the policies of the applicant, and so I think you're adopting those policies as a condition is completely appropriate and should not be modified.
I tend to agree with Attorney Riley. That's why I quoted right from the memorandum, but I, I guess the...
But, you know, that's what I was pointing out. Doesn't the first sentence cover that?
That's what I think.
That's already their policies and processes? If they already have somebody that walks around...
Well, we don't know what their policies are.
That's what I'm saying.
They haven't submitted their policies. We don't know what their processes are. And again, this was their language, not something I invented.
Well, I don't think their language was intended to be a condition. It was intended to be an explanation of what the condition might be.
Well, it was intended to get us to issue a special permit.
Correct.
And in that case, I don't see why it shouldn't be conditioned. This is what they said. They want a special permit on the basis. They should live with it.
It just seems petty, pretty prescriptive to say you do it this way, this way, this way, and this way, regardless of all the instances that you start boxing people into a corner by saying, this is the way you do it.
No, they boxed themselves into a corner. That's my point. I'm not trying to be mean to Attorney Rose.
No, 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 no. It's totally fine.
But I mean, it was the applicant's language that I've used here, not something I sat home and came up with.
So that was written as a condition?
No.
No, not written as a condition. All they're saying is a condition, is that they've said it, now they should live by it. If not, the abutter or the town has a remedy.
Well, okay, when I read it, in a way, and I know what we're trying to accomplish here, is that the first sentence states the policy, and the second sentence states, you know, what the process might be. So it, and I have concerns over, like, potentially unwanted by others, even if it's not a reasonable noise. So that leaves a, that leaves a...
That's...
A big...
Their language.
Well, I know, I realize that, but that leaves a big tunnel to drive through. Now, for instance, as I mentioned prior to the last meeting, you know, I spent time on the site at night, and, you know, from the abutter's property, I could easily hear the band playing 20 acres away at the other side of the complex at one of the reception halls. And it, I don't know, I couldn't, I don't know what the distance might have been, but it was several hundred, a few hundred yards. Now, if I wasn't enjoying that music, I might consider that being unreasonable, okay? The, but I could clearly hear it from the abutter's patio. And I'm quite sure that over the 30 years that you've listened to more than one concert or party or band and haven't objected, you know, to that. Okay? So it's, but I guess I have concerns about trying to, you know, be too detailed and pigeonhole this to a point that it's, it's, I mean, the key thing here is the noise bylaws of Town Hallidge.
Right.
And I think, I think if the attorney had the opportunity to reconsider her presentation, she might have addressed, edited to that she didn't leave things open to this, this type of, you know, detailed
Right.
policy. Yes, yes, sir.
What do we consider the neighborhood? I think it was defined as a neighbor. The house is a neighbor on 28.
Well, sure, yeah.
It's more neighbors. I mean, it's everyone who lives...
I understand that.
Okay.
My question is this. At, at, in a low plane on a body of water, sound travels on the water. Do the other neighbors beyond the water complain as we got to the noise? I don't know.
I don't have any rights to that. Sorry.
I'm sorry, were you asking, have people complained?
Yes.
I did request records from the police department over the past five years, and I have those records with me. And I mentioned this in the summary, I think there have been two complaints over the past five years, and in each case, the noise has been shut down.
Yep. Yes, I'll see you at the turn. The police records probably don't reflect the complaints, because most of the people would call the inn to complain and expect the inn to address it. Obviously, very few people have called the police. I mean, I've had dinner over at Eastwood Ho, listening to the band at the Wacquasit. So it is loud, and I'm sure the complaints go to the inn, and the inn, the inn then addresses them, which is what you've drawn here, and I think should remain in here. Thank you.
If it is helpful, Alton is here, and he can explain, like, you can hear from the manager's mouth how the noise policy is dealt with, I mean, how they deal with noisy guests and things like that. You can hear it from him, if that would help. But operationally, I think this is a tough condition for the reasons you mentioned, Chair.
I mean, I'm only one vote, so if the board thinks it's appropriate, I would propose we strike out, or even if not unreasonable, noise potentially unwanted by others, but leave everything else. So if it's unreasonable, it's unreasonable.
I think we'd accept that.
It's still a question of interpretation.
So what are we, what are we striking? What was your recommendation?
Strike, or even if not unreasonable, noise potentially unwanted by others, but leave everything else. So it's still, should applicant's staff become aware of any potentially unreasonable noise, calibrated efforts, so and so forth? The rest of it will be just as written.
That's acceptable to us.
That seems reasonable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right. Do we have a concession?
I do that reluctantly, though.
I hear you.
And I'm not trying to beat you up, but...
It's all good.
All right.
A little puffery is okay, but I take that.
Is there...
I don't want you too much.
Are we in agreement on four at this point, gentlemen? Okay, yes.
Let me understand what four actually is, since I'm going to read this into the record.
I've got it for you right here.
All right. I've got more scratch outs on this.
Yeah, I know. I've got, I've got you covered.
Thank you.
I'm going to move to close the public hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now we'll entertain discussion by the board.
I've got a few things to say, if it's okay.
All right.
Start.
Okay.
Okay. I wanted to make this point, it came up last time, but I want to make sure it's on the record. Since there are other residential structures on Route 28 within reasonable proximity to Wacquasit Resort, the Shelton's property does not constitute the neighborhood. It's, I think Attorney Riley made that statement last time. I do disagree with that. I think the neighborhood is bigger, and I think that's an important concept, because if we were to deny it, it would have to be based on an unreasonable adverse effect on the entire neighborhood, not just on one abutter. I think, let me just go with the section here.
Walt Day is looking for that. How many abutters were contacted and sent notices about your request for relief?
I'm not sure I have that, their abutters list in front of me.
Can you give me a number? Five, 10?
The public hearing closed, are you still hoping? I'm sorry.
I guess we did close it, but I was asking a question to the...
That's fine.
As far as discussion from the board, the board has a question for the applicant.
I understand.
Okay.
I believe it was eight to 10, but...
So the zoning, the zoning requirements in town, as far as for notification of the abutters, brought up obviously more than one.
Correct.
And definitely, you know, handful, eight, perhaps up to 10, as many, but there was certainly more than one person that was notified.
Yes.
You know, regarding the public hearing, based upon the town's requirements.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, the Gail case is not applicable, because it's not a one-family or two-family residence, but I do believe it meets the requirements of Section 325, 54B.
Yep.
In that the replacement alteration, the change of the structures will not be more substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and the existing structures. The replacement alteration or change of... The replacement alteration or change of the structures will not cause any undue or contribute to any undue nuisance, hazard, or congestion in the neighborhood, zoning district, or town, and the replacement and alteration, change, structures will be used for the same use. So I believe it meets those requirements. I want to address Attorney Ford's arguments. I've, I think he, it, I think they're, your, um, positions are well done, but I have to look at this case, Janet R. Heald and others versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Greenfield, Joan Marigan and others, seven Mass Applic Court, two eighty-six from nineteen seventy-nine. And let me just digress here for a minute, unfortunately, our bylaw does not define site. We do have a definition of site coverage, and it seems to indicate that it can be less than a whole lot, at least where there are, it's in multiple zones. The bylaw does define lot as a parcel of land described in a deed or shown on a plan of land. So, again, the bylaw, once more, I've said this many times, it's unclear, but I do think we can take a reasonable position as a board that the lot and site, for all intents and purposes, are the same thing in this case. And the reason I'm doing this is because this Heald case talks about lots as opposed to sites. The court in Heald stated, and I'm quoting, "In the absence of specific zoning code provisions defining a lot in terms of sources of title or assessors' plan, the stream judicial court has consistently held that adjoining parcels may, and indeed in certain instances, must be considered one lot for zoning purposes." The court further stated that, quote, "Changing patterns of land use frequently require land assembly and realignment of historic lot lines," end quote. And in this case, what we have are continuous lots that probably were merged by law, but now merged by the eighty-one X plan. So for zoning purposes, we can treat them in, as one lot, one site. So I think we can grant a special permit for this project with respect to the entire site of what was formerly the, the two-family dwelling site and formerly the hotel site, now merged into one site. So I think the, um, applicant's project will not adversely affect the neighborhood. In fact, the applicant has taken a number of steps, and we put him in his conditions to ameliorate the impact on the immediate neighbor, Mr. and Mrs. Shelton, and try to let them continue to have the reasonable enjoyment of their property. So I do urge the board to grant the relief requested by the applicant, that's all I have.
Well, that was, that was excellent, Dave, thank you for, uh, I think a perfect summary from, I think, the board's point of view. Okay, Jim?
No questions.
Chris?
No questions.
One point of order.
Sure.
Condition number two, um, just like clarity on whether or not that-
We were taking that out.
Okay.
I'm going to add that, um, no lights will be on.
Well, we'll, we'll, actually, we'll discuss that with the board.
And then this is just back deletion.
Just want to clarify that, uh, on the draft copy from the board regarding item two, the applicant shall continue to permit two Cove Landing use of the town, that's, we're taking that out of it, and that's really negotiations and discussions for what-
Yeah, yeah, number two comes out.
Okay.
Did I knock it out there?
No, I just want to make sure we, we discuss that as a board.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay, we're, um, like to entertain motion to disclose, to, um, close the discussion by the board.
So moved?
Second by Al. Vote on the motion to close discussion, board, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now, I don't know whether or not, you know, let's not see if I pulled this out.
If that would help you.
So, discuss it, okay? All right. The, uh, this time, I'd like to, I'm here, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
All right, case number, still they have five people here, we'll be doing this. Case number twenty twenty-three dash oh-five, Groundpool Resort Owner LLC and Four Cove Landing Road LLC, care of, um, Marion Rose Esquire have been given a special permit. No, I just got to read the assessors' map, sorry. Uh, it's located at Four Cove Landing, Two Swan Ave, Assessors' Map one fifteen, parcel one, S one dash three, R two, and H five dash two in the RX two zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit, uh, to change and expand the pre-existing, uh-
I'm sorry, excuse me. Has been granted.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, the, okay.
Excuse me, it's not right here. Right there, I'm sorry.
Okay, most important thing is a special permit has been granted. The applicant has been granted a special permit to, uh, alter the pre-existing non-conforming motel hotel uses and amenities coverage. Current structure use, unlawful pre-existing, unlawful pre-existing non-conforming uses. The proposed intensification of a pre-existing non-conformities will not substantially be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current structures because it will not significantly create an additional negative impact with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. The granting of this is consistent with the Howard's bylaws, Mass General, Chapter forty-eight, as they will be, intensification of the one or more existing non-conformities. No new non-conformity nor substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. The relief not expressly granted hereunto is hereby denied.
Any relief?
Any relief, yeah.
Any relief not expressly granted hereunder is, is hereby denied, okay?
All work should be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with the, at this application. Said grant of approval subject to the following conditions. All right, now I'll read the conditions in. The applicant shall install screening of over twenty mature evergreen trees of sizes varying from eight to ten feet, and also fourteen to sixteen feet, planted at a grade higher than Two Cove Landings dwelling. In accordance with the plans submitted by the applicant, the applicant shall properly maintain all such trees and shall in timely manner replace the trees that die or otherwise become unsightly with trees similar size and type. Number two.
No, okay, yeah, that's right.
Number two is out.
Yep, but just, maybe three too, and-
Yeah, number, number three is number two, okay. Okay, number three. Number two, excuse me, only four fencing, of only rear fence facing exterior light shall be placed on a rear second-floor decks. Buildings identified as A and B on plans submitted by the applicant, and they shall all be dock compliant and linked to a motion sensor to limit their use during evening, nighttime, and nighttime hours. In addition, each night, the window treatments, um, of rear-facing rooms in buildings A and B shall be closed in blacked-out drapes, shall be drawn over all rear-facing windows. And this shall include all unoccupied rooms.
Sure, that's fine.
Number three, the applicant shall follow the established policies and processes to avoid lessening, and if necessary, terminate any offensive conditions on his property in timely manner. Should the applicant's staff become aware of a potentially unreasonable noise, calibrated efforts shall be made to engage, and if necessary, relocate the source of the noise to another more isolated location. On over twenty-two acre property, the applicant shall follow the guidelines of the Howard zoning, uh, noise bylaw, which applies to organized events and the, uh, to the applicant's restaurants. Excuse me. Uh, four, planting throughout the project area will be enhanced with a particular emphasis on increasing naturalized areas within the fifty-foot buffer zone. Five, roof runoff shall be collected and treated on the applicant's property using infiltration basins that are sized at a hundred years and twenty-four hour storm event. Hardscape runoff shall also be treated using infiltration basins and are sized for one hundred a year and twenty-four hour storm event. Six, all of the redevelopment, redeveloped structures shall be connected to an existing onsite water treatment facility which is governed by the groundwater discharge permit issued by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. And seven, during the life of the project, all construction vehicles shall be parked on the applicant's property and not on any public, uh, street or road. And number eight, it is the conditions of this approval that violation of terms of any condi, of, uh, terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of Howard's zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section seven, and the Howard's zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time. Yes? I just, I'd like to propose just a clarification to make sure we've got it covered, that the special permit granted is to change, alter, and expand pre-existing non-conformity and non-conforming amenities and hotel slash motel use by raising and replacing three one-story structures with three two-story structures intended for continued hotel slash motel use, increase twelve units.
So in order to-
Just to get it out of the agenda.
Right.
Specifically.
Right, that's-
Just to clarify that, that's part of this special permit. And I'll second, I'll second the, uh, motion.
Well, first of all, any, any discussion by the board first regarding that motion? Yes, gentlemen, okay. That being said, let's first- Okay.
Did you call a vote?
I'm going to vote, too.
Okay.
I vote on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, let me hit back, like, no.
I need to, I'm going to, I'm going to rewrite the motion until I can believe it.
Thank you.
I'll get it back to you.
Okay.
I mean, I'll scan it tomorrow and send it to you.
What's that?
I'll scan it tomorrow and send it to you.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to take a five-minute break.
Never-ending case. Charles Dickens wrote, wrote a, Charles Dickens wrote a six-hundred-page novel called Bleak House about this John Dice versus John Dice case, and it never ended.
Doesn't continue.
I don't know, I don't know why my cellphone-
It's funny.
I go out, Rick has to shut it off.
I don't understand what you're doing.
Perfect timing.
Wasn't it? He said, he made a statement, and then Siri comes out of my pocket with, "I don't think I understand what he's talking about."
That was perfect.
The guy's turning around like, "What was that?"
He says, "I don't, who said that?" Siri, she's listening to, you know, Big Brother's listening to everything.
And I hope, of all the people for that to happen, who is here?
They can't make it up, right? And I wanted to, after you shut my phone off, I wanted to check on how the Red Sox were doing tonight. It didn't do.
I shut mine off after you had yours, mine was shut down, but I shut it off.
It's never done that, it's never done, I, I just put it on, all town meetings, church, anything, I put, just put it on the silent.
Well, you can't shut this area off, they're listening to you.
I don't like that. That's what people say, anyway. So is Brad Kurtz?
Yeah.
The listening, well, guess what happened? Yeah, later.
I'll just be a couple minutes getting myself cleaned up for the last one.
I understand totally.
Patience, appreciate it.
I did read that, I, I don't usually read the paper about these things, but I read the, I said, retired lawyers, geez, I didn't know that.
Well, I, I thought maybe I made a couple good arguments at the last meeting. But you taught me a lot the last few years, and I've done my best, and I've, I got my degree from night school in Guatemala.
Yes, apprenticeship.
I read you, I looked at your website, that would make me very important. I know when you were, Greg was out in New York, something, in New York, in Texas, spots in Tennessee. It's amazing what you can do with stuff. Christie's in Connecticut. That's my theory.
Uh, thank you for your, your summary in the last meeting, that was excellent.
With a, with a-
Yeah, but relationships matter.
Excellent.
Sort of a team.
It's very hard to, it's very hard to train new people.
Where'd you work, sir?
That wasn't what made me tough, it was New Jersey, clearly.
I'm working out of the same place.
Yeah.
At the site.
Okay, we're back.
Ready?
Al, you might read in this case, appreciate it.
Case number twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-five, Stagg Realty Trust, Peter S. Stagg, trustee, through the attorney William Crowell Esquire. The owner of the property is located at one-eighty-two Route one-thirty-seven, Assessment Map ninety-seven Parcel S-one dash one, Six Ponds, DWRPD, and CH-dash-two zoning district. The applicant seeks a use variance to operate a lumber company pursuant to the Howard Zoning Bylaw three-twenty-five fifty-four and MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section six. I have a letter from the Health Department, and I'll read it into the record. It said, "I hereby review the applicant, application for the use of variance to operate a lumber yard on a parcel in the Six Ponds District located one-eighty-two Route one-thirty-seven. The property is currently under order to connect to the municipal sewer system. This connection would need to be conducted prior to the Health Department's sign-off on the building permit approved, um, for change of use." I think you have a copy of that anywhere.
Uh, voting in this case will be Al, the chair, Brian Solvin, Dave Muddley, Chris Murphy, and Dave, David Reyer. So I'd, would you like to ask the applicant to represent it to themselves and anyone assisting you in your presentation?
Thank you very much. Good evening. A long evening. I wish it was, this was a sort of a guidance variety, special permit, putting an addition on a house, but it's another challenging, um, case for you, but hopefully not too challenging. I'm Attorney William Crowell from Howard's Port, and I'm representing Christopher Diaz, seated beside me. He is the principal of SBS Properties LLC and of SBS One Source, which is a lumber company. And indirectly, I'm also have authority to represent the present owner, Peter Stagg, who's the, excuse me, trustee of the Stagg Realty Trust. I'm assuming you folks all know the location of this property in, in East Howard, just before the four corners. And I submitted to the chair, per his request, today, an aerial site plan. It's not by an engineer, but I wanted to at least give you an idea of the layout of the building and the asphalt and the lot in general. May I distribute?
Chair, please do.
I ask one question.
Of course.
Clarification. Just, the building and property are still owned by Mr. Stagg?
Correct.
And you have, Mr. Diaz has a purchase contract?
We're under agreement to, he's under agreement to buy it. He's the agreed purchaser.
That's all, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
If you could share these, I'd appreciate it.
No, I think.
I can look at this one.
I, I have several. And I submitted a rather lengthy petition and attached a copy of the existing subdivision plan, as well as my narrative, and the previous letter that I had written to Jack Me, the Building Commissioner, on July third, outlining our position in this matter, as well as the correspondence from Attorney Dan Chamberlain back in June twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one, to the Building Commissioner at that time, regarding the pre-existing nonconforming use by Mr. Stagg of the auto dealership. And that has since been supplemented by Mr. Stagg last December to show that, demonstrate specifics as to what he's been doing with regard to the property for the last ten years to continue and not abandon that pre-existing nonconforming use. It goes way back to, originally on that corner was Gladding Motors, that's what this building was, Gladding Motors, and then there was a horse-riding stable on the other side, no fire department, that was it, in East Howard. But it was Gladding Motors, so it clearly predates any, any zoning requirements. And I also.
Attorney Crowell, excuse me.
Just one more clarification, so I can follow along here. In your submission.
That's the subdivision plan.
Yes, is that the original building?
Yes.
It's been added on to?
Yes.
Okay.
It was nineteen-eighty-seven plan, and I talked with Attorney Chamberlain today. He said that Mr. Stagg about twenty years ago added on to that building a hundred and twelve feet to the back. And so there's additional pavement, and that's why I submitted the site plan.
And the cleared area is approximately the boundaries, the site boundaries?
No.
No.
On the aerial?
No.
No.
If you look at the aerial, it's another hundred and fifty-seven feet of woodland.
Looking right back here, right now, over here, so you can get, this site plan was not, and then.
Okay. So you, you own into the woods here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's the rear of the lot, and that aerial shows, I believe, a hundred and fifty-seven feet of woods that has not been cleared, that's part of the lot.
Okay, sorry, I didn't pick out those dark ones there. Okay, now I see it. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So I was pointing out what I submitted, along with the chair asked town council lawyer for the town, Amy Quessell, from KP Law, to give her opinion on this, which she did. So that's all, and she, she also included her opinion back to town planner John Ideman a couple of years ago when this came up. So I thought it'd be, put it all out there, so you know what all the background of, is of, of, of the situation. So, the reason we're here this evening is to ask you simply for a use variance. We're not asking for any permission to put an addition on to the structure. In my letter to Mr. Me, the Building Commissioner, I said, under the, the, about a resource district, we don't need Board of Appeals or Planning Board permission to put an addition on as long as we meet the setback. So we're not asking you for an, to approve an addition to the building this evening. What you see on that site plan sticking out to the north is the repair shop. When they add on to the back of the building, a hundred and twelve feet, he also added on, on the right-hand side, as you face the building, from one-thirty-seven, he added a repair shop, and that's the one that's had the sign there forever that says, "Honk Your Horn." That's what that is there, all right? We'd love it, Chris, if that sign could come down, if we get approval. So, we're asking for a use variance, and although I said I don't read the papers very often, I read it twice recently, one was a comment about you. So I just want to make it clear that Mr. Diaz and I are not expecting anything from you folks tonight, right?
Okay, get out of here.
There was, there was a comment in the paper, and it talked about an expectation. I just wanted you to know that all we expect from this board is for you to exercise your good judgment in deciding whether to grant the variance or not. So we're here to ask for a variance, but just in way of background, we don't think, we, we didn't think we need to be here, asking for a variance. I still don't think we need to be here, happy to be here, and make a presentation, but we don't think we need to be, because we don't think that, that this is a change of use, there's a pre-existing nonconforming use, and as I outlined in my letter to Mr. Me, that in the, what a, yeah, I'm sorry, in the Six Ponds District, I think I misspoke earlier, I said the wetland, it's the Six Ponds District, is an overlay district in the CH, overlays the CH-two zone in this area. And the Six Ponds Bylaw says that if you have a pre-existing nonconforming use, which we do, then that can continue as long as you're not changing that pre-existing nonconforming use. And so our argument is simply that Mr. Stagg had engaged for years in the retail sale of personal property, tangible personal property, cars. Inside the building, sales office, retail sales, few cars in the building, and then outside the building, public display of cars, personal property for sale to the general public. So our argument was, it's just changing from automobiles to lumber. We're still selling retail, inside the building, selling lumber in a retail capacity, and displaying lumber outside, and the public can purchase that because of the outside public display. So my argument was, the only change is from automobiles to lumber, but as a character of use, it's not changing. It's still generically retail sales and outside display of personal property. The chair referred that letter, sorry, Mr. Me referred that letter to town council, the Building Commissioner, and town council gave a very short opinion that just said, "I don't, I, I don't agree, right, in my opinion, this is a change of use." Let me read from that. "In my opinion, used car sales and retail sales of lumber are not the same, and this would not be the extension of a nonconforming use." So, here we are. We need a variance, it's not an extension of nonconforming use, it's not a special permit, she disagreed. We lawyers advising towns tend to be very conservative in our advice, and the Building Commissioner, I'm sure, didn't want this all on his back, so it's on to the Board of Appeals. So that's the background. So we're asking for a use variance, and in our bylaw, Section three-twenty-five fifty-four B-two, says that in no case shall a nonconforming use be changed to another nonconforming use. And I would submit, that's what's going on here, and it says you can't do it, but that's your function, is you can vary that law if you feel that we meet the criteria of, of forty-eight, Section six, I'm sorry, Section ten, for a variance. So our contention is that we have to have hardship that arises from the unique shape, size, or topography, or soil conditions of the lot, or the structures on the lot. So we're not arguing that we have a unique shape to this rectangular, trapezoidal-shaped lot, fairly flat. We're not arguing that, but we're arguing that we have a unique structure on the lot, and a unique, unique shape to the structure on the lot that meets the criteria, meets the requirement of the statute, that this is a very large building, even larger because of the addition on the rear and the side, and Mr. Stagg has been trying actively to sell this property for ten years without success. And two years ago, they had a buyer, car dealership, that was the purpose of Attorney Chamberlain's letter back then, and the lengthy affidavit and all of that, saying it hasn't been abandoned as a car dealership, and then that deal fell through. So it's been ten years, he's got a hardship, a financial hardship, he can't sell the property for a car dealership. So along comes Mr. Diaz, who owns a lumber company in Brewster, has one on Vineyard Haven as well, and a third location.
In Orleans, yes.
In Orleans. A storage building in Orleans. So, he's a small business person, but very successful, and does a great job, and he comes along and enters into a purchase and sale agreement with Mr. Stagg. So we put together an agreement, and we're doing our due diligence, and this was three months ago, we're going through the whole process, and then a month ago, Chris calls me up, like, on a Friday morning, and says, "Hey, my building burned down in Brewster yesterday." So, he's got even greater hardship now, that he wanted a bigger building, bigger site to expand his business, but now he really needs to move his business because it was destroyed by fire, and needs to relocate as soon as possible. So our argument is that the current owner has a hardship, the agreed purchaser of the property has a hardship, both financial, as I've indicated, and that a literal enforcement of the bylaw under the statute would cause financial hardship to both parties, and that this board could grant desirable relief in the form of a use variance without substantial detriment to the public goods, substantial, without substantial detriment, because the property is already located in an underlying CH-two commercial zone. It's already commercial, and because of the Six Ponds overlay, which is environmental, this underlying use is allowed, retail sales are allowed by right in the CH-two zone, and outside display of goods for public, sale to the public, is allowed by special permit from the Planning Board in the CH-two zone. So it's not like we're coming along asking for something way out of line, from what the bylaw already would allow if it wasn't this environmental overlay from Six Ponds. So our argument is that appropriate safeguards can be taken as needed to protect the Six Ponds District. Parenthetically, it's not like we don't have experience in that district with a lumber yard, because here's John Hinckley right down the street, Hinckley Lumber Company right down the street. So we already know that that's a, a functional business in the Six Ponds District. Finally, the use variance, in our opinion, could be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw, because I said, as, as I said, the commercial use is an underlying use allowed in the CH-two zone, and that we already have a historical use of retail sales outside display of goods for, for public consumption by Mr. Stagg for twenty-five, thirty years on that property. I also have another handout that I'd like to make, but that's our legal argument this evening, and I would ask that the board grant the variance, because I believe we meet the criteria of the statute in all respects. And we have ten letters of support. I've made three copies, so if you haven't seen them, I don't know if they got to you. Okay. Okay, you've all seen them, great. I'll just highlight first that there's three that are from immediate abutters. So, we have one from Orthopedic and Sports Physical Therapy on, when you face the building on the left-hand side, that's a new building, who says he's very much in favor. If you would like, I'd like to read maybe three or four into the record if I could.
Please do.
Okay. So, from, this is from occupation, Orthopedic and Sports Physical Therapy. My name is Richard Qualter, and I am the owner of Orthopedic and Sports Physical Therapy of Cape Cod located at 172 Route 137 in East Howard. I have had the pleasure to know Chris Diaz as both a client of our facility and as a local business owner. Chris and his company Specialty Windows, which is part of his company, supported the growth of our company during the construction phase of our new building. Mr. Diaz took the time to come and meet with me to discuss his plans and vision for the property adjacent to mine. I would support Chris and his current vision for his business in the East Howard Village District. I do believe that our community would benefit from the addition of locally-owned small businesses, as well as the potential improvements to the property that Mr. Diaz is proposing. Please feel free to contact me with any questions. Then, on the other side, as you face this building, is RPM Carpets, and we have a present, a letter from the president, Mr. Roy, and he says, recently it came to our attention that Chris Diaz of SBS One Source is interested in the use of the space previously occupied by Stagg Chevrolet. RPM Carpets would welcome Mr. Diaz and his business as a neighbor and feel that his business would be a valuable commodity to our area and would particularly complement our business as we work with many local architects, contractors, and desires, designers. It's our sincere hope that the board will approve Mr. Diaz for occupancy and use at 182 Route 137. Then, to the rear of this property, behind the woods there, is Larry Carbonow, who owns Stove Place Two in Howardport, and has been there from, since 19, he's been in Howard since 1971, and he says, this is the third immediate abutter. He says, I'm writing in strong support of Christopher Diaz, who I understand is seeking your approval for a use variance slash permit for the operation of a lumberyard for the property presently owned by Peter Stagg. By way of background, I have lived in Howard with my wife Francine since 1972, and have owned and operated my business Stove Place Two since 1979. I have owned 3.7 acres of land located at 0 Route 137 as an abutter to the rear of the Stagg property since April 13, 1984. As an abutter, I have no concerns about Mr. Diaz's plan to purchase the Stagg property with his intention to operate a lumberyard. The Stagg property has remained vacant for a number of years, and having a locally-owned small business in the area would, in my opinion, be an enormous benefit for the town of Howard. As a local small businessman myself, I would hope the Board of Appeals would support the efforts of a local small businessman like Mr. Diaz, who I have known and done business with for over 20 years. I would welcome the opportunity to discuss this case with the board if you wanted to. I also, if I could, wanted to read one letter from Delaney Builders in Orleans, and it says, we have known, this is from Donald Delaney and Mary Ann Taglifery. Dear Board members, we have known Chris Diaz for 30 years, first in his capacity as a lumber salesman for Shepley Wood Products. So, you're getting the history now. Started as, it was Shepley, and later as an entrepreneur and friend as he launched Specialty Builders Supply. Don thought enough of Chris to give him the use of an office and warehouse next to our building business in Orleans. Chris started with a truck, a small forklift, and his dog Pete, and he's built it up from there. He worked tirelessly to build a business servicing local builders with an array of products and a can-do attitude. The fact that almost all of his associates from Shepley eventually followed him into his new business is a tribute to his qualities as a business owner. Chris is loyal, fair, and extremely hardworking, and we strongly recommend that you grant the use variance. If you bear with me for just one more moment, there are six other letters, which I'm not going to read, but they are from Todd Perry, who's here this evening, who is a local builder and has been around for 35 years, and grew up in Howard, and strongly, and knows Chris, has known Chris for a long time. There's AA Building and Remodeling from Chatham in favor, the Donald, or Donald Company, Inc. from Orleans in favor. I don't want Chris to get too big of a head, but Colhima Savory and DeSilva, it's located a couple blocks down from this, and they are very much in favor of having, having him operate his business. Cape Associates submitted a letter, and Eastwood Companies submitted a letter, very much in favor. When I get done, I believe Rick Roy here is here from, I know he's here from Rick Roy Construction, and he wants to speak in person to this. And Nicole Kidman texted me this morning, said she's a favorite.
Well, that does it then.
That does it.
All those in favor?
Thank you. That's our presentation.
Thank you, sir. Okay. The, before I, you know, open up to the board and so forth for your questions, and I, the, speaking here is, as you know, I, Attorney Kroll, I've always been having you assist me as I learn the zoning in town and always have questions, and regarding the, this is my, this is my first use variance, so I definitely, this is my first experience with this, and have some questions. The, obviously, in our past, it's, most of our variances have been, had to do with the site itself, you know, topography, et cetera, slopes, soil conditions, and so forth. I personally don't see where a use variance has, should be obligated to the, you know, soil and topography situation of a site. And I, and my, my feeling is the fact that in, in doing my own research here, was regarding, you know, obtain a use variance, show that the variance only affect your property and not the surrounding neighborhood or other properties, prove that the current zoning rules prevent you from obtaining a reasonable return on the property, prove that, that the hardship itself is not self-created one, prove there's a hardship that is not self-created, and demonstrate that variance won't change the character of the area. So, I'll give you, you know, probably a little discussion of the board, we can get into this as well, but the, I don't, basically, on the use variance is, you know, be able to provide you the ability to use the land for the purpose that, that won't clash with the neighborhood. That's how I look at it, as far as my point of view, not, not the current topography of, of, you know, the site or soil conditions.
If I may.
Yes.
Interject one thing. The town, the state statute, when it talks about variances, says, after goes through all of the items that I've addressed.
Right.
And that's why I addressed them. Then it says, use variances are not allowed unless specifically allowed by the bylaw of the town in question. And our bylaw, section 325, 52, says that use variances can be granted. It talks about the Board of Appeals to have the power to hear and decide applications for variances, including the power to grant a variance authorizing a use or activity not otherwise permitted in the district in which the land or structure is located. So, that's addressing what the language is in the state statute, and, and why I went by the state statute, but I agree with your, your, your conclusion, which is, will this use alter the character of the neighborhood?
So, I just want to confirm this fact, that we don't have to be discussing topography or soil conditions in the site in order to grant a variance. That's, and I believe that's the case, and I just, but.
Well, section 10 is really not written for use variances. I mean, that's the problem.
That's the problem. It doesn't give you any criteria, so I went by the usual criteria.
But it does say relating to not only soil conditions and topography, but shape of the structures, and I think that's what Attorney Kroll was going to. Shape, not size, but when we look at this building, I mean, the shape, I mean, it's, it's an odd shape, and it's massive, right? If you're driven around it, what else are they going to do with this building? It's been there 10 years.
So, I see, so we're looking at that as being.
That's what I'm looking at, is to get us into.
Well, and I think, you know, and I may be stretching a little, but, you know, when it talks about substantial detriment to the public good, I think too narrow of an interpretation, you know, of the use of that, that site, you know, is basically going to doom the public good, because it's going to be an empty vacant lot forever, you know? So, you know, there has to be some reasonable, you know, you know, to your, to your points, you know, Brian, it's, it's not out of line with what other commercial activity is happening in that area. It's not, I think, grossly out of line with activities that happened before, and I believe the Hinckley's property is in the same overlay district, so any concerns about the material already exist in that area. But I think if, if the interpretation is too narrow about the use, then, then no one's ever going to use that property.
I understand, and that's why I just wanted to clarify as far as the variance, because it, I'm glad we can look at this as being, look at the structure as being, in a way, how we can grant the variance, okay?
If I may make one comment?
Yes, sure.
Okay. I did meet with Mr. Me and with Paul Halkiotis when he was town planner, three months ago on this.
Where was that?
And Paul said, in his opinion, this was a good use of this property. It needed something there, it's going to be, you're going to fast forward in a couple of years, and you're going to see this nice-looking building, lumberyard, very busy, and all kinds of equipment, real estate taxes going, going to go up on this, Chris, on the property, excise taxes on all the vehicles are going to go up, but hopefully, there'll be a bottom line, you'll still be able to pay your mortgage. But the point is that he's going to improve this, it's been blighted, in my opinion, for quite some time there, and I think you'll be very pleased, the town will be very pleased with the result. Well, I would agree with Mr. August's analysis.
So, before I, I have a few other questions, but I want to first start with the members of the board. I think I addressed mine.
Can I see that text by any chance?
I think she blocked me already.
I don't know if Kidman would agree with that, but I have no further questions.
She said her experience was so pleasant at that site that she was in favor of it.
I mean, I want to state the fact that I consider the use of property as a lumberyard friendlier to the environment than the, than a vehicle dealership, conducting repairs and oil changes, and therefore, I don't feel this is a, this use of lumberyard with retail sales of inside and outside products is, is, it's not aligned with the general pass operation of the site, okay? But, a couple questions. What is the status of Stagg Drive? Because that's, is that, that's not part of the acreage here, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, it's a private way?
It's a private way, and there is recorded, I checked it out, there's recorded a use and maintenance agreement with the abutter, with Mr. Stagg and with the abutter, as to who pays for what to maintain that.
Which, which abutters, I mean, to, to your.
In this case, it would be the orthopedic.
Okay. So, they, they share responsibility for the, for maintaining Stagg Drive?
If and when it exists. I'm not sure it exists on the ground.
Okay, I looked at it, obviously, in your, your first old site plan, it was shown, it was shown on the site plan.
Well, it's shown on the subdivision plan, and I believe the abutter is here from.
Okay, that's all right, but just.
But I, I don't think that exists on the ground.
Yeah.
It does.
Yeah, if you can drive down a.
All right. So, there is, there is that maintenance and use agreement that outlines who, it's a private drive, and that outlines who's going to maintain it and who's going to pay how much.
All right. So, obviously, all three-plus acres are being sold in this transaction, and you take the responsibility for that.
Yes.
In the rear of the lot, what's the status now? There are assortment of vehicles, trailers, there's a bulldozer, as well as landscaping supply bins in the back of the lot. Is that correct? That's on the property?
No, that's Larry Carbonow's lot.
That's Larry Carbonow, that has nothing to do with this?
No.
Okay. So, that's access down Stagg Drive?
That's access, Stagg Drive is access to Larry Carbonow's lot.
Okay, all right. So, he's a, basically, that's, on a, on a private road, he has use of that road and so forth. So, back there, that's not part of this property?
Correct.
No, it's all woodland, as shown.
No, I understand, but I.
Asphalt ends.
I just kept on driving down Stagg Drive, and I saw all the vehicles, wasn't, want to call.
Right at the end, when that stuff begins, there's a cleared, like, drive.
It's actually a gate.
Yeah, but to, to the right, there's a cleared pathway, that's the, that's the lot line.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Now, and again, we've, we've had discussions regarding site coverages, building coverages, and all that kind of good stuff, and I realize that today's meeting, I do appreciate the fact that the, as the town council also pointed out, there was not a need for this board at this point to be involved with, with the site itself, other than the use variance, but.
Your question was excellent. Should we do, I have to stamp a plan, and the answer is no. You don't have to stamp any plan, you're not approving any structural variance, it's just a use variance.
All right. Just so, again, as I look at the application, you did, in the application itself, on building the site coverages, you're showing the existing situation as being under 10% on building coverage, and on site coverage, under 30%.
That's my best guess. I needed to, I felt I needed to fill in the blanks, so you folks wouldn't reject the application, saying it was incomplete.
All right. And, and the required by law is, so just, and again, going into the future here, and how this is going to be handled, because I, I do anticipate that after site plans are, you have a, you do have a certified site plan, and, and this goes back to the building department, because the town code for the overlay district is at 10% and 3%, I'm assuming we may be seeing you back here again at some point.
I don't think so, because the, two reasons. One, the overlay district says, Six Ponds says, if you've got a pre-existing non-conforming structure, it existed before, and that's what I put in my email, of when Six Ponds was adopted by the town, and it was in 2001, the May 8, 2001 special town meeting, and then amended May 6, 2003. So, in 2001, that building already existed as extended 112 feet, the asphalt was already there, and I think that that would cover us under the clause that we're pre-existing non-conforming, and if it didn't, the, the state statute says, if you have a zoning violation, that after 10 years, it's unenforceable anyway. It goes away, and you can just keep, keep it the way it is. And it's all been there for more than 10 years.
Right, because I, it.
So, I don't think we have to come back for that, and for an addition, if he wants to put an addition on, as I outlined in my letter to Mr. Me.
As long as setbacks are fine.
He meets the setbacks, he's okay.
So, the, the, going forward, the 10% building coverage of the, of the overlay district and the site coverages.
I think we predated that.
You're telling me that the building inspector is going to be able to waive that situation?
I believe so.
Because it, I mean, the current building is 19,000 square feet plus, and, and the site is 134,000 plus square feet, which means the building's already over the 10%.
Understood.
In, in the zoning district.
Understood.
Okay, all right.
But that's up to the zoning enforcement agent, the building commissioner.
I understand.
And the planning board. The planning board will be in front of the planning board for site plan review for parking, landscaping, lighting, all those things that you folks love to get into, right?
I'm assuming probably in the, when you... You mentioned there's gonna be plans for, you know, property site use or expansion of the building or outside storage. So I'm assuming you're gonna be, I don't know if you can relate to those plans now, but clearing out more of the trees and so forth to use that for?
Yeah, yeah, I don't have, I don't know exactly, but probably to swing trucks around and then maybe put a shed back there. There's a, there's a, as far as back where the woods are, back behind Hinckley's is a three-sided shed. I don't know if you guys, right, something along those lines in the back. And, um, and then there would, uh, an addition, probably less than 5,000 feet off the side eventually, that, that would be slightly taller with a loading dock on it, because that building doesn't have a loading dock.
Okay. Chris, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
No questions.
Okay, all right. Okay. Well, I appreciate your discussion on that, because I was, I had concerns, well, my...
Always.
I had concerns of the fact that how we set up any type of approval tonight, you know, that it doesn't interfere with you being able to go forward. And, and, you know, issues regarding, and I, I had thought the fact that I was gonna, we were gonna see you back again because of the percentages on the overlay district. But I think you satisfied my concerns on that from your comments.
Aye.
Okay.
If we have to come back, we have to come back. I don't think we will.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I need, okay, so I'd like to open up, take a motion to, uh, open up the open meeting and, um, a public meeting. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Okay? And if you would identify yourselves and also fill out, if you got a chance, by the time you're done, that little form there.
God, I gotta learn how to spell my name.
Okay, excellent.
My name is Rick Roy. I own Rick Roy Construction. I actually run my business on Queen Anne Road in Howard. I lived in Chatham for most of my life, but when it came time to set my business up, I actually bought a piece of property over on Queen Anne Road. The industrial area down there is actually kept in pretty good shape. A lot of the businesses there keep a good front, frontage and so on and so forth. And I've enjoyed running my business out of Howard for many years. I've known Chris ever since I worked at Snow Inn for Dr. Fennel. He was a snotty-nosed kid that was working for Shepleys that was trying to sell lumber to us all the time. He's about 11 years younger than me, so I was his elder, and still am. But I started my business, and about the same time that I started my business, Chris started his business. And I have been working with Chris the, my entire building career, along with a lot of the other people that are sitting here in the, in the audience. And I feel that, you know, in listening to all the facts that have been given by Attorney Kroll, who I played basketball against when I was in high school, the board really has the charge of doing something, I think, that would really benefit the town. I, I know that it had to come back to get the use variance, but it's a granable thing. I think that they entrust you with, you know, being good custodians of doing good things for the town, and I think this is a good thing. Chris has a, you know, a fairly large set of people that he employs. I have a large set of people that I employ. I have over 200 subcontractors, and we're all tied together like a family. And, uh, you know, we've all suffered all the things of the pandemic and trying to get supplies. And, you know, Chris has gone out and rented buildings so that we could store shingles, because it was tough to get shingles, and it was like he was a commodities trader, and we were storing things in there. So he's a good shot in the arm to the economy of, of Howard. Like Bill said, you know, he'll be bringing his employees, his vehicles, his taxes, as I do, to the town of Howard, because I run my facility out of your town. I think that it would be a good use of the property. I've known Peter Stag for years. We're fellow Rotarians. And I'm sure that prior to it going into his estate, he would like to be able to, to sell it, so he can maybe spend some of the money that he's invested in that property. So I think the board would be doing the town and the fellow businesses that work within your town, and a taxpayer like Peter Stag a favor if you would allow this project to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Is there any else in the audience, public, like to be heard? Okay?
Hearing no one, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor will close the public hearing?
Aye.
All right. Okay, now entertain discussion by the, by the board.
I think they've met the requirements of the statute, section 10, chapter 48, for the grant of a use variance by reason of the shape of the structure. It's a kind of an odd shape, huge. And frankly, there aren't many uses that are gonna go in there. I think the lumber operation is a particularly well, one well-suited to this. I think they've met the hardship test, particularly the current owner, Mr. Skag. I know from the paper, he's tried to sell it a number of times. Deals have fallen through. And I don't think there are many viable uses for this property. So I think Mr. Diaz's lumber business would make a fantastic fit there. I agree with John, no substantial detriment to the public good. And the last requirement, that the grantee will not nullify or substantially delegate, I'm sorry, derogate from the intended purpose of the bylaw. I think he's in CH 2 now, and if we grant the variance, it's still gonna be CH 2. It's consistent with the uses allowed in that district. So it's certainly in compliance with the intent and purpose of the bylaw. I would, I do think we should put two conditions in addition to our normal, you know, standard conditions. I think we should require that all the materials are handled and stored in a manner to prevent any runoff or contamination into the Six Pond Special District. I think that's reasonable. You're gonna do that anyway, so I think we should require that. And the other one is, I mean, my personal view, that building's been an eyesore forever there. I do think we should require that you upgrade and maintain the building and grounds to generally comport with the appearance of other buildings and properties in your neighborhood.
Yeah.
And I'm sure you're gonna do that. I'm not gonna tie you down to how you do it, but that whole area, except for the dealership, former dealership, looks pretty nice there. They, all the businesses look nice and neat and pleasant to eye appearances. So I think you're gonna wanna do that anyway.
Yeah, that's my plan.
Those are my only comments.
Dave, you said update and maintain the property to conform...
Comport. To comport with other businesses.
What did I say? Update and maintain the building and grounds to generally comport with the appearance of other buildings and properties in the neighborhood. As for a retail commercial area, that looks pretty nice, I think. I've always thought, I used to live in the Whitehead Drive, Continental Drive, and a lot of people always complained about Stop and Shop. I always found it to be really attractive, well-maintained. At the spring, it's gorgeous with the trees, so you want it to...
Cherry trees.
Yeah, really looks good, I think.
Okay.
All right.
Now, so let me just, hold on one second. Let me just finish this off. I apologize. So, um, any other additional comments from the board? Okay. Hearing none, the chair will now entertain a motion to close the discussion. Does anyone have a second?
Second.
Dave?
All right.
And now, okay, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Case number 2023-25, Stag Realty Trust, Peter S. Stag, Christine, Louis, Attorney William D. Kroll. The owner of the property, updated 182 Route 137, has been granted a variance. The applicant, who operates in lumber company pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw 32554 and MGL Chapter 48, section six is failure to the board to make it. This grant will result in substantial hardship to the applicant. The board further finds that there is no substantial detriment to the public good by granting this variance, and that its granting will not nullify substantial derogation for the intent and purpose of the bylaw. All work will be performed in accordance with the plan. That is, during the life of the project, all construction vehicles will be parked at the applicant's property.
Do we need that for a use?
There's no construction. We're not proposing any plans of construction.
Sure, you can give her that, sorry.
All right, let's move down here. All materials will be stored on the property, updated and maintained the property to conform with, let me see what I threw down here.
Can you read Dave's comments right here?
Material be handled and stored in a manner to prevent any runoff contamination into the Six Pond District. And second, upgrade and maintain the building and grounds to generally comport with the appearance of other buildings and properties within the neighborhood. Is the condition of this approval, any violation of the terms and conditions of this variance may be enforced as a violation of Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to chapter, MGL, chapter 48, section seven, and the Howard zoning bylaw, as they may be amended from time to time. Just one clarification, the 48 reference should be to section 10, not section six, because it's a variance, not a special permit.
Okay, thank you.
Just a typo in our agenda.
Oh, okay. I'll just throw that in there.
It should be section 10. I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion read.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome. Good luck on the project. Looking forward to, looking better.
I am too.
It will.
We gonna buy your lumber?
Thank you, guys. I'll talk to you later.
All right.
Okay. Well, Julie, thanks for joining us tonight.
Yeah, no problem. I, uh, I am completely done. I don't have your benefit, probably.
Oh.
I haven't yet.
All right, gentlemen, I did not, did you? Does anybody need a break? Just wanted to check. Okay, all right. I don't have a seat.
Um, I'll go to the podium because I know we yell at everybody for not going to the podium.
Oh.
Just a question. So on looking through the materials from Amy Questle's opinion, in terms of, and, you know, I, I think you all are more well-versed in this subject than I am. That's why I didn't get up to say anything. But just making sure, because when I was looking at Amy's opinion, indicating that we weren't, there was no similar use in terms of switching from the lumber to, to the automobile. So just making sure we don't need to go back to reconfirm with Amy that we're okay on this path. I just read that probably differently, and you've probably had other discussions with her that I don't know. So I'm just asking that question.
Well, I think she was, what I gather from her opinion, and certainly John, I think it was the fact that her opinion was the basis for Jack indicating that he could not do an approval that had to go in front of the board. Because Jack was originally saying, okay, what can I do here?
Right.
And her opinion was that a variance was gonna be required. So that Jack could not, in her, in his, in her opinion, Jack could not issue a building permit, you know, for the, for the site. And it had to, you know, go in front of the board to get a use variance.
Okay. I just wanna be sure that we're good as your liaison. I just wanna make sure that I'm on the same page as you and Amy.
Right.
So I can follow up too, but I just wanted to say, when I was reading her comments, I was, kinda, that question kept rolling through my head. And I figured, you're well, more well-versed in it. You've been dealing with, you know, the different communications. So I just wanted to ask that question.
Did you read that the same way, the fact that Amy's...
You're talking about, is it the same as the prior use?
She, she was saying, yeah, so, yeah.
That really wasn't applicable, the Powell case, the Powell test, because what, that was based on asking for a continuation of the special permit. And they did not take that route wisely, in my opinion. They came in and said, instead, let's have a use variance. When I looked back at the chronology there, I think, my opinion, for two years, he didn't sell any car. I think his prior non-conforming use permit expired. So I think they had to come in for a variance under any stretch of the law.
Okay, 'cause she makes reference to automobile sale, automobile sales and repairs, but then goes on to say they're in their own subject in the, in the list, in the table, and that lumber sales aren't even in there. So that's what I'm just making sure, that we aren't creating some sort of different non-conformity that we don't have the ability to do. But it seems like you're pretty comfortable with the variance, and that's all I really wanted to ask.
It didn't have to be the same for the use variance. It had to be retail?
Mm-hmm. So that's where we're going on?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
I also think the fact that Hinckley's is around the corner, this is not some wild new use to a property in that area. I mean, there's already a lumberyard.
Well, that too is non-conforming.
Right, right.
All of those were done, obviously, before zoning, so that's, you know, that's what, that's why we're here.
The point of creating a new category, to me, it's not a new category, right? There's already a similar business in the area.
Agreed, yeah. I just wanted to make sure in terms of legally, because obviously, and you, and you guys know better than most boards that we have some work to do on our zoning cleanup and, and to make everything mesh the way it should. And so, in that regard, the board is trying to work hard on that. And so I just wanted to make sure that we're not creating some sort of new scenario that we need to kinda tighten up. But it sounds like we're not, so thank you. Appreciate it.
No, your pleasure. No, thank you.
And again, I should say, I don't make it to all of your meetings because they're so long. And they're kinda like our meetings. But obviously, if, if at any time you need my help, I'm here and accessible. And, you know, I know Brian and I have been, you know, communicating via email, but just wanna say that. So please feel free to contact me if there's anything.
And if you have any suggestions for us, swing away.
No, yeah, I think you're doing a great job, and I appreciate it. And I appreciate your answering my questions, because I'm coming in, you know, at the ninth hour here, so thank you. Thanks for all your time.
Thank you.
Take care. Good night.
Good night.
Wait, before you go, I'm gonna put my two cents in. The board of selection of this town and every other town constantly talks about the need for affordable housing.
Mm-hmm.
So we now have a proposed 40B, Pine, the new Pine Oaks. And I really think the board ought to listen carefully and support it, because the existing Pine Oaks are wonderful.
Yeah, they are. Well-run.
They've done a great job on it, and I think it would really help the town and the developer if it went forward as a friendly 40B.
Yeah, I mean, they've been into us with different presentations, and I can say from the drafts that they've shown us so far, I, I like the... from the drafts that they've shown us so far, I, I like the appeal, you know, of, what they're trying to do is create some different subsets that I think are appropriate for, you know, our area. I mean, sometimes the board, obviously, we're looking for housing in all shapes and forms. I think the only time you saw the difficulty with, you know, Chloe's path, is you're taking three, two, three-story high-rises cramming in, in an area that's pretty populated in terms of vehicle, traffic, et cetera. So, I would agree with you. I would also say that the rent, you know, when we're talking affordable and workforce, and not to get off on a tangent, but, you know, both things are needed very badly, and unfortunately, workforce isn't defined, so we're now looking at ways to look at the, you know, average median income and figure out ways, as our, as our other towns, trying to increase that percentage to get it to a more realistic number, because most people, many people, I should say, don't qualify for affordable. Some do, but many don't, and that's that gap.
Well, on the forty-B where it's, it's affordable, considered eighty percent of market rate, eighty percent of market rate is still a big number for people to.
It is.
In this town, I mean, it's just, it still isn't affordable.
No, and.
The term affordable through a forty-B, it's, it's still, the market rate here is, is a big nut for.
Yeah.
Most families to take care of.
That's right, and those one-bedrooms were eighteen hundred, and that was a one-bedroom.
And that's for, supposed to be affordable?
Affordable.
Right.
And that's one person, or two people splitting it, I don't know how that would work.
The, the other thing that I think needs to be addressed, if we're just taking on this, is taking a hard look at what Mary Anderson brought up at, at one of those recent meetings, is the, is the forty-R.
Mm-hmm.
Designation for, and, and has a town looked at available land that can be developed and still in Howard to see like, you know, how many, how many acres of land has gone undeveloped that can be developed for commercial and residential use? And that being the case, is there an opportunity to look at, you know, ten acres there, or eighty acres there, here, and to the town to take a serious look at, at getting behind a forty-R development?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think there's multiple things going on, and the trust members can speak better to it, but we've just finally got an RFP for the thirteen acres that's, that's referred to as the Marsaline property. We also have, for years, been working on the owners unknown to figure out what we can do with that, and if we can't get the taxes, you know, we should be taking that, and to your point, trying to do something in town with that land. But I think the thirteen, never mind the Queen Anne parcel that they're talking about developing through the Pine, Pine Oaks owners, and I don't want to name all those people, there's just too many, because they've come together to really try to get something done for Howard, and to be honest, I think that's another refreshing note on their project, is that people are getting together, because we all know how badly it's needed, and government moves slower. But that thirteen-acre parcel, to me, is a gem that the town's lucky to have, and I want to see us develop, and not we be the developers, and not we be the landlords, but to get some good companies in here who will give us proposals that are doable, that are fresh, that's a new look at a brand-new site, that has the ability to maybe create different subsets of villages, maybe some of apartments, maybe some of them are duplexes, maybe some of them are single-family homes.
Which is also a goal of forty-R, because that, those aren't familiar with it, it's a requirement, the town could actually take a, you know, zone of section land in town, and that zoning actually requires, I think it's eight, eight housing units per acre, which then would get into combination apartments, condos, as well as duplexes, single-family.
Right.
But increasing the density of the land, you know, so you can create more.
Yeah.
More housing, and if you can, instead of going, you know, forty thousand square-foot lots.
Right.
You're going to continue to get minimum two million dollar homes.
Exactly. No, it's true.
Quarter foot lots are not starter homes.
No, no.
No, so you need to have starter home lots, and, and you need to be able to increase the density, and, and I just hope we get in, into a, a movement in town where we're going to look seriously at increasing density of some, and set up zoning, new zoning areas, which you could do on, like a forty-R situation.
Right.
And then the town be able to control it.
Mm-hmm.
Have some control of what's, what's happening.
Right, and of course, in that, in this, in the site that I was referencing, the Marsaline property, I mean, that, that scenario is a little different than, say, a development that's over by the sewer, because the forty thousand square-foot lots came from, you know, nitrogen issues and septic systems and bedroom counts. So, ten thousand square feet per bedroom is what the state regulates, that's what they require. So, when a town decides to, you know, if you've got ten thousand square feet, and it's basically a three, four-bedroom home you're looking to, that's where they came up with the forty thousand. But that's a nitrogen issue that in certain areas of town, we don't have anymore, as we continue to start, you know, sending the flow to Chatham. You know, in, in a scenario where you've got thirteen acres, you can increase the density in, in certain areas and have certain open space, and still create a combination of housing. And I do think that that's what it takes, because not everybody wants, needs a one-bedroom apartment, not everybody wants a house, you know, so we have to look at these, these various ways that we can bring people here, keep people here, kids, young kid, you know, young students that graduating, that, you know, I have two kids, I have twins, you know, the idea that they could buy a house down here, ever, at this point, I, I don't see it. And, you know, it's depressing to them too, because back in the day when they felt like they were on this remote island and had no access to, you know, city life, it comes around as you get older, we all know that, they have a real appreciation for where they grew up, but can they stay here? You know, and what about our elderly population that can, you know, continues, we have this increasing aging population who would like choices, maybe they would like to live in a one-bedroom apartment that has all the amenities, but what, what do they get to do with their house that's, you know, outpriced, or becomes either one of those, you know, trophy homes? Or they stay put because they can't afford to go anywhere? And those are the depressing factors that we've been facing for the last, really, twenty years. I was renting apartments, starting back in two thousand and six for Lighthouse Realty. We had, we had probably a hundred apartments, and they were only one and two-bedroom units. That's where I started to see the housing problem, because I had families constantly coming to us, and we couldn't accommodate them. So, if I happened to get a phone call from somebody who thought we might rent their house for them, I would just pair them together and say, maybe there's an opportunity for you to talk to this person who's looking to rent their house. But, you know, that's a long time ago, and here we still are. So, we really do need to do stuff, and, you know, I, I also look at the builders in the room that were here earlier. Part of my, my mind goes to getting those people to work collaboratively together too, to work and help us figure out how to develop, you know? I have this crazy thought in my head of them, collective local builders possibly creating their own nonprofit to come together, because they know how bad they need it too, for their workers.
Yep, exactly.
So, that's sort of a pipe dream, but it keeps coming back to my head, so I'm going to maybe try to get on that route. But, thanks.
May I make a recommendation? That's a nice presentation right there.
Well, we got it on, we got it on tape.
Yeah, right, right there by exit ten.
Right, but it's on, it's, board is on Queen Anne.
Well, it's, it's kind of.
Little bit off.
It's off, yeah, if you were, if you were going to take the right at the end of Queen Anne, at the lights, to go to exit ten, it'd be on your right, and you'll see that gate.
Yep.
It's a beautiful property.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Thanks, guys. Good night. Take care.
Good night, Ed.
Okay, first thing addition to the agenda is approval for the minutes from July twenty-sixth. I didn't see him, did you?
They were in, they were in.
They're in the package.
Oh, they were in the package.
I didn't see, they weren't in my package.
I don't know.
Defer next month.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to move the approval of July twenty-sixth minutes. So, you had it in yours? I didn't have it.
If I can get through this whole mess and get it.
Yeah, I didn't have it.
Yeah, they were in. Yeah, they were in.
Yeah.
They were in the package I, I picked up the other day.
Yeah.
All right, so.
I got them buried.
Okay, I didn't have them, yeah, so I must have picked mine up early, and it's probably sitting in, so we're going to defer this to the September meeting. Okay. All right. New business. Okay, and it's kind of, you know, as we, it's funny, that case that got just withdrawn, I actually got, sometimes these cases come up, I'm going to hand this down, there's, there's three, just take one for yourself. These cases come up and, and find myself researching and learning as much as I can, and then I end up seeing facts that I, I didn't realize before, okay? Okay. So, I just got three things here, which actually were given to me, and I had a discussion with the building commissioner, because we were discussing, you know, five Connecticut or that issue, you know, regarding the, the fence height. Anyways, building structure height, and, and we've run into this, but the height of a building or structure shall be calculated by averaging the distance between the lowest pre-existing grade point at the base of the building structure and the top of said structure, and the distance between the highest pre-existing grade point at the base of the structure and the top of said structure. So, basically, what I was trying to say is, if all sudden this, if I'm getting this, if I'm understanding this thing, if this part of the building is thirty-two, and this part of the building is twenty-eight, it can be considered thirty-foot. Which, in the past, I've always looked at the building height as being the highest point and not being averaged. And he brought this out in discussion regarding, as he told, originally, on that situation, on that fence issue, you know, it had, it had six sections of fence, was it four?
Six, and only two of them.
Only two of them were over seven feet. So, originally, the building commissioner said, not a problem, because on averaging, it was below seven feet. Okay? And he mentioned that to me, and I said, can you, give me something to back that up, okay? But then what, what happened was, he, he spoke to the homeowner of five Connecticut, said, just, would you, here's an application, put in an application, let's end the pain. You know, and so he, the guy applied for a fence that would be over seven feet. Okay, so that's how, so then he approved the, the building, he gave him a building permit, so he could have his last two sections at seven-two and seven, seven-four. Okay?
In the past, where it's been a close question, we've made the applicant go back and do the math and present it to us.
You know, and I was thinking of this regarding, he had a case a year or so ago, where the guy had a retaining wall, and one section of it going towards his house and garage was over four feet, and he ended up needing to get a, a variance for that, or a special permit, to have that section of the wall being over four feet, because the rest of it was, was under.
I do remember that one.
I remember that too, yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
And, and we didn't, we didn't apply this averaging to that.
What was previous building inspector that pushed that along, right?
Well, that's true, but, no, I, I recognize that. But, so I, you know, this is not a point, I just, we're not having a big discussion tonight, but, you know, found this code in a book regarding calculating by averaging, and I, I don't think, I think this may come up again at some point. Okay?
The one we had was before you were on the board, and they were bumping up over the thirty-foot, but they went back and they did their calculations with their engineer, I guess, or surveyor, and brought them in and presented, and the average was under the thirty.
Okay.
Barely, but it was under.
That was the homes over on Depot.
I think so, down by the beach down there.
There was new homes there, and there was this issue that we got to do, and one or two of them were already completed, they were definitely over thirty feet.
Yeah, but they met the requirement, where they ran the, the numbers, yeah, the average numbers.
Yeah, and then the next two sheets just talked about, because it, fences and walls and enclosures as far as just, that was supporting what was being done by the, that particular case, and the last page is, is work exempt from a permit, okay? And just a bunch of different, you know, work items that, that, that do not require a permit when someone's, you know, doing construction, I mean, working on a house. So, I wanted to just make this available to you, you guys can throw it in your zoning books, as a thought, additional information.
I just already said it again.
I just want to present this to you, so you can, you know, toss this in your zoning books and, and have it there. Any, any old business? Okay. I think the only possible, I don't know if I mentioned it the last meeting or not, but all the research I had done regarding private roads and being maintained, et cetera, so forth, I, I gave that all to Julie, as a liaison, as far as if, if there's going to be any next step, so, feel the fact, I, I was concerned about a situation on safety, I gathered all the facts, including code written in, in Orleans, how they handle maintaining and, as well as maintaining private roads, and as well as enforcement of maintaining private roads, so I gave that information to Julie as well, and next step is up to the selectmen and so forth, if they want to pursue anything, at this point, you know, it's nothing, it's between the selectmen and the planning board, that's what I'm concerned, but, of course, we don't have a planning board director anymore. The last fall was, was, was very gung-ho on trying to come up, you know, put your arms around what's happening with private roads in town, to make sure that they get properly maintained, to, you know, so for safety for vehicles, okay? But anyways, just want you to know what I did with that, and so, nothing I'm working on anymore. I don't think there's any more correspondence, oh, you, you all got the email regarding opening law training? I just highly recommend for those who haven't been through it, to do it, I don't expect you to be done in the past, I don't expect you to be there, but, like I mentioned, anytime I've done these things and looked at taking, looking at tests later on, I'm not getting a hundred percent, so if there's an opportunity, it's convenient for you to be at the opening law meeting, either afternoon session, evening session, on that Thursday, great, okay? And just let me know if you're going to be there, and if you're going to sign up for it, you know, just.
It's different material than what we're required to.
Yes, it is. The, the requirement we have is on, what's it called?
Ethics and. Ethics.
Yeah. You know, whether or not, you know, you know, taking a hundred and fifty dollars for things like that, and all these various things, and how to treat staff, and, you know, so you, you, we all took that and got at least a C and passed it, okay? All right, so it, but this is different, I know, I think last year, I think I was in a meeting with, Chris, you were there, and Al, I think you were both there at the meeting. Who else? Who, who's had the opening law training before?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, so you haven't had a joint, I'm sure Ken hasn't, but I'll more likely be signing up for, you know, for one of them as well to be there, okay? So, again, if you don't, can't make it, no problem, just want to bring to your attention. All right?
I'm going to make one comment. Does anybody here not get the Chronicle?
Yes.
Okay, there's a story, there's a lot of people upset about the development principally in East Howard.
Right.
Where Eastward is building two million dollar homes by the SCAD, so they're going to be, they had a meeting and talking about zoning.
Oh, I was at that meeting.
Moratorium, they're going to have another one in September, so it was just something that's swirling around, and the only reason I bring it up is because they did mention a number of times zoning changes. Now, nobody knows what they want, so I don't think it's going to happen, and I don't think a moratorium is legal, but I don't know.
Well, okay, so I was at that meeting, I, I did actually speak at one particular point, and I talked about forty-R situations, okay? But there were a lot of people, there were about a hundred people at that meeting.
Yeah.
And, you know, it, it was a, I think, a good start to get people active and thinking about. And, um, you know, it, it was a, I think, a good start to get people active and thinking about and raising the issue, all right? I did not, and I think they had a start someplace, but, um, the only directive that was going at that meeting was to form a committee to call for a special town meeting at which time to present an article for a moratorium. So that came out, that was discussed at that meeting. Now, the, one of the issues they, everyone had, and it came up during that meeting as well, regarding, uh, Eastwood companies particularly, was that they tend to just cut everything down a lot and don't try to fit a house within the trees and, you know, save vegetation and so forth, okay? So that, that became an issue and people talked about, you know, outside of the building plans, they should be getting approvals for not taking a tree down that's over four inches wide or, et cetera. I mean, there were a lot of things that were thrown out there. But anyways, the, a lot of ideas went out, back and forth. But that's the final thing was, how do we create a moratorium on construction? Which, um, I pointed out to one person that was there that I felt, um, that was the wrong direction to go, to try to, to try to, you know, begin an effort to come up with some, you know, new reasonable, um, um, opportunities for affordable housing and, and if you want to make changes in the zoning, starting off with a moratorium on construction, uh, was just going to be a lot of effort that was going to go down the drain.
The jobs, 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 jobs.
Okay, you know-
What was their end, what is their end game? They want to stop McMansions, they want to knock big things, they want small things? Or they just don't want any trees ripped down?
They, they don't, basically, they won't say this, but they don't want Eastwood to build two million dollar homes in their neighborhood. They don't want low income housing, but they don't want two million dollar houses either.
They want new homes.
They don't, so that's a good way to bracket nothing.
This is my drawn dist interpretation.
Yeah, I think I'm agreeing with you.
That what they were saying, the statements, that comes out being clear.
And there were some people there that, one person in particular, I recall, um, that made a reasonable, um, uh, discussion regarding the impact of just clearing land, right? So, you know, you, you eliminate all your vegetation, well, then you eliminate places for birds and bees and, and insects and, and, and they discussed the fact that the bird population in town is, is going down. And because they consider that because of lack of insects and lack of, you know, um, you know, bugs and things because of, and they do all the clearing, instead of maintaining vegetation, you know, and all people-
You know, one of the problems is if you don't clear trees down. And my neighbor up the street, they took down a bunch of trees, left a bunch standing. But in a forest around here, they have these long spindly things. All of a sudden, those are the only things standing, a good wind comes and they all fall down.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
My neighbors losing trees every, every storm comes, so there was two or three.
But I agree with that, Dave. It's not, it's not to me like I don't want anything, right? Because if trees and birds are the reason, high density housing is going to cut down a lot of trees, right? So then you're going to be opposed to that, right? So then you're opposed, you're just opposed to things.
You want to leave the forest as is and leave it alone.
I mean, there were, there were about thirty different views that were discussed at that meeting. I'm only throwing a couple of them out here.
Probably the same person at town meeting that got that ordinance to get rid of balloons because of that four seagull that got all taken.
There'd be a lot of hot air over this if it come to nothing. I'd be willing to bet money on that.
I, I think, no, I, I think actually, and, uh, again, they had a start someplace. I think it, it may, out of a hundred people there, it, it might mean that five people might get active and get involved and help be a catalyst to get things done, all right? You know, it's a-
But I agree with you, the, the easiest thing in the world to do is say no. And they need to find what they're going to say yes to.
Yes, and, and, you know, maybe, and I, I briefly brought up the need for, you know, uh, more density in zoning if you want to increase affordability and, and actually town helps to control, you know, development to a certain extent. You know, and, and perhaps there should be covenants, I didn't discuss this, but I can understand there could be better covenants regarding, uh, new developments. When I, before I moved to here, I, I've always raised my family in Berkeley, Mass. And our neighborhood, when it was developed, had covenants as to how many maintaining trees on your frontage and-
That's different though, that was in a development, a subdivision.
Right, but this is what, the Eastwood is, is developed as a subdivisions and the, and the issue was-
But Eastwood's not going to do that.
Right, but they talked about Davenport does do that. Davenport fits in their houses and they do a better job of maintaining some of the, some of the natural aspects.
Because by and large they retain ownership, they don't sell them.
Or amenities. That may be true, but they're still building housing and they're not, they're not clearing everything in sight, okay? So that was a discussion that it can be done, because that was part of it. But, so out of a hundred people, maybe five might get, you know, might get involved and be a catalyst to get things done. No, I mean, that's, so I, I don't think it's a waste. Uh, I have no intentions of going to the next meeting, um, because basically at, at some point, um, I, I think the fact that, uh, uh, you know, a chair of a committee that's involved with zoning and so forth, I think, you know, necessarily, or even like, they invited, they invited the planning board to go to the meeting and I didn't see any planning board members there, so it's-
Were a couple of selectmen though.
Uh, yes, uh, Don Hall was there and also-
Julie there?
No, Julie was not there and, um-
Mary, uh, was it, was it Mary Anderson?
The new, I, I, no.
Mary Anderson?
No, Mary Anderson's not there, the new selectman, um-
Oh, yeah.
Hockey, Hurricanes hockey.
Alter?
Alter.
Yeah, they're on the business.
There were two scandals, Jeff Hand.
Jeff, Jeff Hand, Jeff Hand were there and, and Don, Don Hall was there. And there were two selectmen that were there. And, uh, you know, it, and then there was, people were also like, it was a, it was a, it was a section where people were bitching about, excuse my French, complaining about things such as, you know, planning board meetings where, you know, people were informed of a change of, of, uh, uh, of the agenda. You know, and they were at the meeting for a long time and they weren't told that the agenda had been changed and, you know, people, and something had been dropped. And, and how, how do we find out, you know, about who's going in front of the zoning board and the building department, I mean, the planning board? And I just said, you know, the agendas are posted, you can just look it up and, you know, and read it, okay? You know, it's, 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 we're, you know, it's, if you're in, in the, typically only people get informed anyways, taking a zoning are, are butters within so many feet of the property. So, you know, just get involved once a month, look online and see, find out what's there, you know? And, uh, that's how, that's how you find these things out. But anyways, I do think it just increased the level of discussion and it might motivate current committees involved with this thing and be a catalyst that, you know, maybe start moving up their pace to get things done. Because the pace, in my opinion, has been kind of slow.
We'll see.
We got to look into things.
If I got twenty bucks, nothing happens.
I'm not going to take that bet, you know?
Yeah, like, like I said, I, which, you know, I see another venue, unfortunately, everybody wants to have a veto.
So anyways, there, you know, the next meeting's the twenty-sixth or twenty-eighth of September, if you get what the date was.
Well, just keep your eyes out on the Chronicle, that's the only reason I mention it, yeah.
And prior, and prior to that, they are-
You don't get it, Dave?
I read it online.
I can send it to you if you don't get it.
I, I get it online as well, yeah.
But the online version doesn't have, it's not, it's not, not complete.
It's, doesn't seem, you can't find everything, you're right.
Right, and even a story isn't complete either.
I've read all the papers.
Well, there are two versions, you know, maybe more now.
There's only four pages to the paper anyways.
Right, but, because I know-
Brewster and Orleans are included in it.
But I looked up the story online regarding the last meeting we had here with Quasit. And the story in the paper, there was more verbiage.
Yeah, it's shortened online because people's attention span is shorter.
And that's true of the New York Times, the Wall Street Journal, the online is condensed.
True, but true.
I can only scroll so fast, man.
But you can actually sign, they, uh, on the private website, you can sign up for their, uh, bulletin. They send me an email like three or four times a week with links and stories.
Yeah, actually I have it, I, I've got it, I've got it hooked up so I get the online automatically.
If you go through a Facebook, a Facebook page, it, it has a link, so you can, I don't, I haven't been getting that, but now that, now that you mention that, I think I can see it.
Yeah, you get an email and if you, you can actually, um, there is an e-version that you can get an e-reader and you don't need the paper. And it is the version of the paper, but it's, you know, on your phone or on your iPad.
You can also do what I do occasionally here since I'm in the town hall when you guys are.
Pick up the ones that are free out here.
You get a free one.
Probably a stack sitting out there by the door right now.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to turn.
All right, uh- At ten oh one, Dave, uh-
Second.
Second, Chris? All those in favor of journey?